Good morning, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Board of Supervisors for May 13th. With that, let the record reflect that all members of the board are present. We're going to call for any additions or corrections by county council at this time to close session?
No additions or corrections.
All right, at this time, we have items A through D under number one on our closed session agenda. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a public comment on any of those items? We invite you to use the raise hand function via Zoom, star nine via landline to be recognized. There's one online. Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and give the person online the ability to unmute themselves and give them two minutes to make their comment.
Christian Snyder.
Mr. Schneider, the floor is yours.
Good morning. I just became in receipt of a letter on January 28th to the FPPC from County Council, Susan Blych. I'm not sure if this is on behalf of the board as well, or just county council, or Susan Blych. But those were three different parties. So we have an issue of dual influence in Ms. Blych submitting that letter. Ms. Blych knows what dual influence is and why it's improper. But I do want to point out that Ms. Blych admits that the county indemnified the defendants, approved legal funding, and even entered into settlement discussions. These were choices that were made by the county. The county made those choices with full knowledge of the facts, retaliation, defamation, and political interference in an election. Yet after the court ruled that the claim showed malice, the county withdrew its indemnification. But the issue is, is that the legal claims never changed. The underlying issues when the board voted to indemnify these individuals never changed. And all the actions that occurred after you indemnified these individuals have not changed. The only thing that's changed here, it appears, is the information that county council is providing the Board of Supervisors to make a decision on behalf of the people of Monterey County. But as it stands now, absolutely, you interfered with an election, and you used public funds in order to do that. I have a county claim in front of you. I hope that you will resolve this quickly, and let me move on.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. We're out of time. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Anybody else? All right, seeing other hands online, nobody in room. We're going to recess to closed session reconvening here in chambers at 10:30 a.m.
I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order here. I see that, given the role, all members are present. Supervisor Askew is joining us shortly here. And so I'm gonna ask Diego Celis to make the announcement of the interpreter. I believe he's with us via Zoom.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diego Celis y seré su intérprete en español e inglés para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario público y necesita servicio de intérprete, favor de hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Y favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Diego. And with that, we're gonna proceed at this point. We're gonna have the pledge. I'm gonna see if our CAO doesn't mind leading us this morning. All right, I'm gonna turn to the clerk to see if we have any additions or corrections to this morning's agenda.
There are two. We have a correction to item number two under ceremonial resolutions for Gonzalez High School Boys Soccer Team, and that is we received a revised ceremonial resolution. And secondly, we have removal of item number 15 under referral responses, which is Board Referral Number 2025.03. And that item will be removed from the agenda and brought back at a later time.
All right. With that, we'll proceed to ceremonial resolutions. Is there a member of this board who wishes to pull one of these for comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll go to the public. Is there a member of the public who wishes to remove an item from our ceremonial resolutions? I see nobody coming forward in the room. I've got a motion from Supervisor Alejo. Is there a second? Take the second from Askew. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries unanimously. At this point, I'll come down to present the first resolution to the representatives from Gonzalez High School. All right, welcome up. So this morning, we're recognizing the Gonzalez High School Boys Soccer Team for receiving an incredible, incredible achievement. And this was done through hard work. It was, they actually got second place in state this last year. And for the, let's give them a round of applause. This is a NorCal division, and just for a tiny town like the community of Gonzalez, to be able to compete at such a level, looking at the list of everybody you guys beat was absolutely astounding. And I can't tell you how many people reached out to me from your city council to your mayor to say, "Have you seen this? Are you watching this?" And I know they already got a parade in town. They got, they got the recognition. But the important thing is that here, at this Board of Supervisors, we step up and make sure the light is shine on those doing the important work. And these young boys, these men are doing some incredible things in this small community of Gonzalez, who's always known to do it the Gonzalez way. And so I want to read you guys just a few portions of this resolution. So the Spartan showcased their exceptional skill, determination, and teamwork throughout the season, securing a spot in the championship after defeating King City, Monterey, and Pioneer in CCS, and Somerville and Milpitas in NorCal. Now, it's not a small feat, right? We have one of the most competitive leagues right here on the central coast. And the fact that they rose above and were able to rise to every occasion and continually put their best foot forward. They have done an incredible job of bringing pride, not just to Gonzalez, but to the entire Salinas Valley and all of Monterey County. And for that reason, we wanted to stop our meeting this morning to congratulate you. And thank you for putting in the hard work and let you know that we look forward to even more moving forward. Repeats are not uncommon. And so we know you guys are building a strong network and a strong foundation for future generations. So congratulations.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Miguel Vodari, the head coach for Gonzalez High School. First of all, I want to thank you guys, you know, for having our back and, you know, this whole time. You know, some of the, you know, the day one fans, I guess you can say, when we maybe had 10 or 15 people in our stands, you know, to having the whole community, the whole town of Gonzalez, Salinas natives, and, um, and our CCS championship, you know, our state games, you know. Because I want to thank everyone, all the coaches, obviously the players, the parents. So thank you, guys. You know, we couldn't have done it without these boys and the help that we get from all the schools and obviously from the community. So thank you, guys.
I'll say one more thing. Gonzalez is a very strong, small community. And one of the incredible things that they've done, it just happens to be happening now, is they're getting a brand new field, an incredible new facility that these young men are now gonna compete on, and young women. It's, it's an incredible facility that will be ribbon cut this Friday, I believe, right? So we're very excited to bring that resource online for the community. It's right across from the new library and community center that this board invested in as well. We're doing it all in Gonzalez together. So congratulations one more time. Let's get a photo.
And, Chris, if I may, to the coach, I want to thank you, you and all the assistant coaches, the parents, and all the athletes for really making the Salinas Valley very proud. We know that to get and compete at that level, it takes a lot of work and dedication, commitment, but also having the support of the community, something really beautiful. So just to tell all the young athletes, I know they all couldn't come because they have class right now, but to say how proud that we are of them to achieve their full potential, not only on the field, on the classroom, but in life as well. So that's only possible with dedicated mentors and coaches like yourself. So congratulations to all the athletes. And please let them know how proud the Board of Supervisors is of their accomplishments. Gracias.
All right, our next resolution this morning is going to Janine. And Team Janine, I think I had you listed, so if you guys would all come up. We're gonna be recognizing Hospital Week in Monterey County with a direct appreciation to Natividad, their staff, and really to the entire team who makes health care in Monterey County possible at the highest level, at the trauma center that is Natividad Medical Center. We know that in this troubling time, one of the most things that we're, one of the things we're hearing most about is challenges to our health care system. But there's professionals who show up every single day at this facility, whether they're looking at the HVAC system, mopping the floors, doctors, nurses, experts, cardiologists. You can't imagine the amount of care that goes into operating a hospital. And so we wanted to take time to thank those people who continually show up to make sure our community stays healthy and that the resources that they need are always right where they need them, here at home in Monterey County. I just got back from Washington DC where we had very tough conversations about the state of health care in rural California. I consider Monterey County rural, and our hospital is one to be proud of. So many others talk about how they're on the brink and how close they are to losing having access in their communities. And I'm proud to brag about the achievements that our hospital has been able to pull off while continuing to excel. And so as we recognize National Hospital, Hospital Week in Monterey County, we want to congratulate the team and thank them for all that they do. I want to turn it over to Dr. Harris and team to share a little bit with us about what this week means to them.
Thank you, Chair Lopez. I appreciate it. Appreciate all the kind words. The theme of this year for Hospital Week nationally is "We Are Healthcare." You know, one of the things, and you rattled off many of the things that we're proud of. This is the 10th year of trauma. You know, we win award after award. We have an amazing teaching center, where I think folks know and some don't, about our UCSF-based family medicine residency. We win award after award, whether it's in the OB department or the emergency department or rehab, calling out how fantastic our, our programs are, whether it's locally, but also nationally. And really, none of these great things can be done without the 1,700 employees that work there. And I think as of today, 440 doctors are on medical staff. You know, my, my bosses, my, my two, the Board of Supervisors and of course the Board of Trustees, well, how do you do all these fantastic things? And it's, it's not me. It's those 1,700 folks, those 440 doctors. And really, what is the, what is the secret to our success? It is our, it is a mission-driven workforce that are completely committed to our mission, to serving, yes, their patients, but also the patients' families, our community, each other. It's an amazing group of people that really make a difference. And I, and like I said, the, the national theme is "We Are Healthcare." What are the, the core parts of, of who we are? And we, we even say it in our strategic plan, "We are Natividad," or "Somos Natividad." It really is what it's all about. Every single day, every hour of the day, whether it's on the weekend or, or at night, we really are here for the community. And, and I'm just the voice for all those folks. They do, they make the difference every single day. So thank you for recognizing.
Hi, I'm Andrea Rosenberg. I'm the Chief Ancillary and Support Services Officer at the hospital. And I just want to echo some of the things that Dr. Harris did in fact say. This is such a great time of year. I love the second week of May because it's always the second week of May Hospital Week. And it's really our opportunity to really celebrate all 1,700 employees. We haven't always been that big, Janine. Janine and I have been at the hospital a long time. And it's just such a great time for us to really go over all the great accomplishments that we've had. And as Chad said, it's really because of the employees that we've been able to do these really phenomenal things. So a big thank you to all of our Natividad family during this week.
All right, at this time, I see a lot of people in high vis yellow back there. If I could get you all to come back up here. You're just gonna hide? Randy? Come on, Randy. Come on, guys. Don't hide. Even if you're not wearing high vis, if you're part of the team, come forward. That's it. Pile in. Pile in. I heard this is an engineering feat. I think this is a logistics challenge, but not one that this team cannot take on. So we're looking at National Public Works Week. This is what it takes. We talk about government in action. We talk about the challenges we face being a rural county with 1,200 road miles. We talk about the facilities that it takes to serve our community. And it doesn't just happen. It takes men and women who show up every single day and represent for their community, knowing when it's raining and it's pouring, they're away from their families on roadside, putting up warning signs so nobody hits a puddle without seeing it. You guys are the backbone of this county. The biggest request we get out of our office, and I know it's the same for my colleagues, is for the services you provide. And we are so grateful in the way that you show up. Your absolute commitment to keeping our community safe, sun, rain, shine, snow, sleet, we've seen it all, and you've always been there. You've never failed to show up for us. And so we're taking this week, we're proclaiming it Public Works Week here in Monterey County in your honor. And we know it's not always easy. We know we could always use more, more patch, more asphalt, more trucks. But know that this board sees you and recognizes your commitment to our residents, to the quality of life in Monterey County that begins with a point where somebody needs their government, whether it is a paved road, a sidewalk, clean water, someone to stop the flooding, someone to let them know where there's a crisis. We're making sure that those facilities that we serve the public out of stay habitable. They stay useful, that they remain beacons of hope for our community in terms of accessing their very critical public services. You guys are that frontline. So in deep appreciation today, I want to thank you. And even though I wish I could hand each one of you one of these, I'm gonna hand this resolution over to Randy and ask him to share a few words with us.
Thank you very much, Chair and members of the board. I'm gonna hand this over to Myra Zamora. Myra, will you please come over here out in the front? And please hold the Public Works Week recognition for the entire set of teams up here today. Thank you. This year marks the 65th anniversary of Public Works Week. 65 years of proclaiming public works. And yet, you all have, as said by our chair, have endured all the different conditions of which the environment can throw at us to keep all the services going for our public. The theme for this year is "People, Purpose, and Presence." Those are highlights of the three cornerstone ideals with which you all do every day to help our communities excel. And that's a goal that you strive for every day. Many a time in our communities, you all do the work with or without fanfare. And in cases of many of you, you're keeping the roads open and drivable. You're keeping county buildings functioning. And you're keeping county parks available as recreation and safe spaces for our communities. And then everyone else behind the scenes also helps that run with all the other functions that you all do. It's funny because this is, this is the one time that we do take to recognize all the hard work you do, but you do it every day, again, with or without that fanfare. Giving back to our communities by the work you do is what gives public works, facilities, and parks professionals that sense of purpose. And again, you're present and behind the scenes. You're the unsung first responders of the first responder world that keep our communities safe and thriving. So whether or not it is someone who sees you out there, who's either patching a pothole, trimming trees, all the way from the South County in San Ardo to the, the North County in Paharo, to keeping a county building functioning, such as repairing the boiler room when the boiler room has gone down and leaking in the middle of the night, or making that park space available for one of our park tenants who's renting a space for a family gathering that they have planned for months now, or if you're servicing any of our county vehicles for all the county services that you're keeping functioning. It's you all who are doing it, again, with or without that fanfare. And for that, this is a moment for us to be able to thank you for all the hard work that you do here in Public Works Week, which is the week of 18 May 25 through 24 May 25. You are truly the spokes of the county wheel to keep the county going. That all said, we won't be around forever. The county will exist for years to come, but we all have a finite period of time where we're on this planet. And so to help encourage the next generation And so, to help encourage the next generation of professionals and workers to replace us, like we did last year, we do have a Public Works Week event for this coming Sunday, 18 May 25, at Torel Park, which we encourage the public to attend. It's from 1,100 hours to 1,500 hours. And at the front of Torel Park, you'll see the combination of the various public works, facilities, and parks functions that we'll be highlighting out there, with the various staff who'll be manning the booths, in addition to the Monterey Bay area chapter of the American Public Works Association, and the City of Salinas has partnered with us, and we'll also have a booth there showcasing what all we do for our public behind the scenes, keeping the county and in some cases, the city going. And with that, we thank you all very much for all the hard work that you do tirelessly behind the scenes, but know that you have, you're the people that serve that purpose, and you have that presence. And with that, handing back to the Chair, and thank you all very much.
And I know it's full down here, but I'm going to ask my colleagues to come and join us, as well as our C A O., because I want you all to know that they stand with you, literally and figuratively. So, I'm going to get them down here to join us for a photo as we finish this. Let's see, Luis is a little short. Let him in the front. All right.
All right, and next up, we're going to do one more resolution for Monterey County Food Systems Coalition. So, come on down. Is Natalie here? Or no, is Genevieve here?
I don't see her.
I don't see Genevieve. Okay, well, we missed Genevieve. Well, I'm going to make a couple comments then without Genevieve here. But the Monterey County Food Systems Coalition is a group that's been meeting and working together for many years on the network of creating access to healthy, fresh food, it's supporting resilient and sustainable communities. And with the work of Blue Zones, they've really been thinking about how the strategic priorities of increasing access to healthy foods for community members, and how procurement of locally grown produce in institutional settings can support schools and other organizations increasing the amount of garden produce that finds its way into our food, into our plates and into the food that we're eating every day. So, the Monterey County Food System Coalition is gathering to build more resilient food systems, enhance food security, and promote sustainable food systems within Monterey County. The coalition consists of dedicated members from various sectors, including Blue Zones, Monterey County, local governments. We've got representatives from the County of Monterey participating, nonprofit partners, community advocates, farmers, health professionals, and others who are working collaboratively to promote equitable and access to nutritious food products. They're also looking at how food products find their way into our grocery store aisles and thinking about the policies that allow for food to find its way into grocery stores, where grocery stores are located, and what kinds of foods are located where in grocery stores, so that it makes it easy to make the right choices about where and how you purchase the right kinds of foods. The coalition is committed to fostering partnerships with local farmers and businesses and community organizations to increase access to fresh produce and healthy food options for all of our residents. We want to just recognize that these things don't happen, again, by accident. They happen by sustained dedication of incredible folks who are thinking strategically and working really hard to make it easy for residents to make the right choices, to increase our health, and to make sure that everyone has the same access to healthy choices. So, we are therefore recognizing the efforts and the dedication of all of the partners who are participating in the Monterey County Food Systems Coalition, and recognizing that we all have, that we all deserve access to healthy, fresh foods for all of our residents here in Monterey County, and that the Board of Supervisors remains committed to further enhancing food access and a healthier community for all residents. So, we have a resolution that we'll be making sure we present at one of the upcoming coalition meetings. So, thank you for the opportunity to present, and thank you to all of our county partners who are committed to ensuring healthy food access to all residents. Thank you.
All right, round of applause. All right, at this time, yeah, Supervisor Lego.
I know a lot of public works employees left, and I was glad that they were all here, and I appreciate all your words and by Randy Ishi. But just on the record, I just wanted to let our employees know how much we recognize their hard work and how much we see them as also as our first responders and community heroes. And we look back to all the hardest times in the last several years, certainly in my last nine years, when I look back at whether it was flooding on the Carmel River or the Paharo River, the wildfires, the devastating storms in 2017 to the most recent, every major incident has been public works who has been there, putting themselves on the line, not to mention all the other emergencies that many of our facilities have. So, they keep our county going. So, I just wanted to also just weigh in and say thank you, gracias, and that we really do see you all as community heroes, and we all commend your tremendous work that you do each and every day for keeping our county government running well and also really helping our residents when it's most needed each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Lego. And I just want to concur and say that it's also the disasters that didn't happen because of the efforts they put in, just like basic roadside mowing that stops so many fires every year. So, great point. Supervisor Askew?
And I'll just add, I think, you know, we didn't get a chance to speak, but for the record, we had a chance to host Randy Ishi with one of our recent Wednesdays with Wendy. And the amount of work that comes out of public works as a department is tremendous. And even though District Four falls into an area where we have five incorporated cities, and one would think that we don't see a lot of the work that happens out of public works, the reality, after spending an hour talking with Randy, we could have spoken for 10 hours about all of the ways in which District Four residents benefit from what's happening in the public works space and from our public works staff. So, I just want to, again, echo the appreciation and the significance of the work that is done day in and day out, night in and night out, holiday in and holiday out, all the time, year-round, hour in, constantly, from the folks that we just had here in chambers with us. So, thank you to all of the team that works with Monterey County Public Works. It's an honor to have you here with us briefly. We appreciate you, and we value you tremendously in ways that we will never be able to begin to communicate. So, thank you. Also, wanted to just briefly say to our, I was kind of hoping that we'd have the Gonzales soccer team players here with us today. I know it's the end of school.
Leo Mar could make it, yeah.
Yeah, I know it's the end of school, but maybe one of these days, they'll be able to come and, you know, pop in and say hello to the chambers or board meeting or committee meeting, knowing how separated, I think, sometimes our school systems are from local government. But sports and high school sports are, were for me such a pathway to keep me present, showing up every day. And soccer particularly is, I think, one of those sports here locally in Monterey County that allows for so many of our kids to gain those leadership skills that I know I continue to use every day. So, to all of those, all of those players who are playing, keep up the great work, and we're so proud of you. And to all of those adults in the community who are there supporting all of these youth athletes, thank you for making these things possible and the recognition that Chair was able to provide today. Come, come, come visit us, and we'd love to see you here in chambers when the time allows. Thanks.
Go to Supervisor Church.
I was just a young boy when I first really learned about public works because my grandfather worked for the county. He was a foreman down at the San McGill Canyon Station down there. And it, you know, over the years, just constantly seeing these great people out there doing work, when there's a washout in a road, when there's a tree down, and please be out, North County, there's a lot of trees that get down. And they're always out there first, as Randy mentioned earlier, the first responders. And they just don't get credit for this, but it's the task of taking care of 1,261, I think it is, miles of road. All I know is that if you stretch it from here to the, it goes one-third of the way across the country, as has been well pointed out. Also, if you stretch it from Canada, Mexico goes two-thirds of the way for that. But it's, really shows you the enormity of the task at hand in this huge county. And I know we get a lot of criticism for our roads and things, but what these folks do on a limited budget is just miraculous, just miraculous.
Agreed. Supervisor Daniels?
Thank you. I just want to echo everything that my colleagues have said, and there was something in the resolution that really struck me, and it's that the health, safety, and comfort of our communities greatly depend on these facilities and services. And I know that's not understood, and I know that that's not recognized. And so, I'm glad that we're taking this moment this week to let the public works staff know that we recognize the work that they do and how important it is to our health, safety, and our comfort. And I want to echo what is being said about roads, but also facilities. I'm a new supervisor, and I cannot even begin to articulate the care that has been put into ensuring that my staff is safe and comfortable in our office. And that is every, that is a government building that's a county-owned building, so it's not just me, it's all the folks that are housed in that building, all the folks that come into the courthouse. And so, I just am super appreciative of both the staff that's out there maintaining our roads, maintaining our facilities, and then, of course, our parks, which there are jewels in Monterey County that mean so much to me and my family. And so, I would be remiss if I didn't also mention the care and the love for places that I care and love so much. So, thank you very much.
All right, at this point, we're going to proceed to our appointments. We have three of those today, all from District Two, so I'm going to see if Supervisor Church wants to make a motion.
Yes, I'll move to approve the appointments.
Is there a second? All right, now, let's take this out to public comment. Is there any public comment on these three appointments? Seeing nobody in room, no hands up via Zoom. We'll bring it back for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we've arrived at our consent calendar, which is items 19 through 43 on today's schedule. Is there anybody on this dice who wishes to pull an item from consent for comment? Alternative action? All right. I've got a motion. Is there a second? I've got a second for asking. We'll take this out to the public to see if there's a member of the public who wishes to remove an item from consent for comments. I see nobody in room. I do have a hand up via Zoom.
Esther Malkin?
Esther, go ahead and let us know which number you want to speak to.
14, please.
14, okay. Is there any other hands here? All right, with that one, we'll go back to you, Esther, and go ahead and give you two minutes to make your public comment on item 14.
Yes, I wanted to thank you for providing.
That's not on consent, Esther. We'll have to wait till we get to.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I don't know that I can because we're doing it all morning, so it's going to be part of this morning's agenda. I just don't know what time. All right, so at this point, I have a motion and a second. And with that, with no additional public comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, with that, we're going to jump into general public comment, or as I've heard it referred to, open mic time. This is an opportunity for the public to share comments regarding items not on today's agenda, but within the purview of this body. We invite folks to come forward in room and via Zoom. If you're on Zoom and wish to make comment, we ask to use a raise hand function or star nine to be recognized. We'll go ahead and go with folks in the room first. And, all right, come on forward.
I'm Laura Davis with LandWatch. I've commented three times now without any response or action from the board. I'm asking you again to please enforce the M O A with the City of Gonzales. The M O A calls for avoiding sprawl and maintaining a positive jobs-housing balance. Vista Lucia will be unaffordable to those who work in Gonzales unless the city chooses alternative four. I'm asking the county to abstain from entering into a tax-sharing agreement with Gonzales until the city puts forward a proposal that complies with the M O A. Please agendize Vista Lucia and take action before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in room? Welcome up Waste Management.
Yeah, Christian Thornley with Waste Management. Thanks very much for your time. I really appreciate it. In our efforts to keep you informed on what we've been doing in the county, I wanted to give you a quick summary on drop-off events. We've started, we started in April, and we're continuing through the year. At these events, as you know, we're curbing, we're curbing illegal dumping by letting people bring mattresses, tires, e-waste, metals, appliances, and other items, H H W, hazardous waste, sorry, to our events, and they're able to drop them, and we recycle a lot of the items. We had an event April 4th in King City, and at that event, we collected 17.48 tons of materials. And we had an event in Lockwood on April 26th where we collected 5.3 tons of materials. We do have upcoming drop-off events that I'd like everybody to know about. June 7th will be in Aromas, at the community park in Aromas, which is always a successful event. Will be June 21st in King City, back at the Salinas Valley Fairgrounds as part of Beautification Week. And July 12th will be in Castroville, actually at our yard, which is a really good event because all the bins are already there. We, later in the year, we have events in San Ardo, Perundale, a couple, well, including the one I just mentioned, but another one in King City and in Paharo, too. So, we're doing, making a lot of efforts. Liz and I are out there, 8 o'clock on Saturday mornings, and as it heats up, you know, it's a lot of work, but it's a fun day and helps the community. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christian. All right, see no one else in room? We're going to go to, oh, Ms. Alve. The floor is yours. We're not done yet. Go for it.
We're not done yet. Another update, one I'm really excited to share with you guys. As you know, I'm Liz with Waste Management. Our local call center is coming online in June. All five of the agents graduated training last week on May 9th. Residential calls make up about 90% of the call volume we receive. So, residential calls will go live June 16th, maybe a week earlier, but planning for June 16th, routing to the Castroville office. So, if someone does need to speak with a live person, it'll go there, and they will be backed up by our NorCal call centers out of San Joaquin, Lodi, and other locations throughout NorCal, people who know what, you know, a Big Sur landslide means for the community, right? If all five of those agents are busy, like I said, they'll be backed up. We're going to continue to have SoCal support until we build out those queues fully, we know what the call volume is, how many, you know, Spanish-speaking calls we get, all those nuanced things, right, as we gather data, as we roll out this very new process. So, they will be going through commercial training this summer. We're going to skill a couple agents. It's a different process handling a commercial call versus a residential little peak behind It's different process handling a commercial call versus a residential little peek behind the curtain, right? But I, again, just in full transparency, meeting with county staff every week, want to make sure you guys are aware of our obligations in the franchise agreement that we, we set out to meet. So, this is a very exciting development, but I will say patience and grace as we work out the details of this will be much appreciated. And as always, we're here for any questions or, or concerns you have. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to Zoom.
Michelle Clary?
Ms. Clary, we'll give you the ability to unmute yourself and give you two minutes.
Yes, good morning. Just want to comment on Royal Oaks and the, and the San Miguel Canyon Road. I attended Supervisor Church's Town Hall where we had some commitment from the Highway Patrol that they were going to come out and do some enforcement of speeds because people aren't adhering to the 45 mile per hour around these blind corners. And they were supposed to be reporting back to Supervisor Church's office, and we have yet to see them. And we're seeing uptick in accidents all around San Miguel Canyon and corresponding roads from people going off into the power poles, flipping over. They're going way too fast. And again, I know that there's all these things about what's happening with speed limits, and yet we're seeing no law enforcement, we're seeing no support, we're seeing so many people on our roadways going super fast. We're seeing semis on this road speeding by that cannot slow down fast enough for us coming out of our driveways. We need some support here for these local communities that are just trying to live each day without getting hit by somebody on these roadways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Next?
Christian Snyder?
Mr. Snyder, the floor is yours.
Good morning. I just wanted to address the board with a clarification of something. When the board hears a county claim, you're not acting as legislators, you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. And that means the law requires you to be neutral, impartial, and focused solely on the facts and due process. But the standard also applies to county council. If councils implicated in events under review through prior decisions, communications, or legal oversight, they cannot ethically or legally serve as your advisor in resolving the matter. Their continued participation creates a structural conflict of interest that undermines the legitimacy of the process. And if the board knowingly proceeds under conflicted legal advice, you're not just overlooking the issue, you're ratifying it. Ratification means that you're adopting that conflict as your own. That decision carries consequences. It increases exposure to civil liability, and it undermines the validity of your vote. More importantly, it opens the door to tolling where the statute of limitations is paused until a fair and lawful decision is rendered. This isn't just about one claim, it's about institutional integrity. If your own legal team is involved in wrongdoing and you allow them to guide the outcome, then no fair hearing is possible for anyone. And that's not just a violation of trust, it's a violation of law, and it's a violation of what you promised the people when you were elected. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Next. All right, that's all we have for public comments. With that, we'll close public comment and proceed. I'll just remind the public that we don't respond to general public comments by practice here because those items are not agendized. We appreciate everybody coming today to share their thoughts. With that, we're going to jump into our scheduled items, beginning with item 12, which is a presentation from Don Yonamatsu on our CDBG funding.
Good morning, Chair Lopez, members of the board and the public. My name is Don Yonamatsu. I'm with Housing and Community Development. And Darby Marshall, the program manager, is available on Zoom if needed. I'm here, I'm here before you today regarding the 2025-29 Consolidated Plan, which also includes the fiscal year 25-26 Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendations for the Community Development Block Grant. We're requesting the Board of Supervisors accept the Consolidated Plan, which includes the Annual Action Plan, adopt and authorize HCD to submit the plan to HUD, approve the subrecipient agreement template, which is the agreement the subrecipients enter with the county for use of the CDBG funds, authorize HCD to execute these agreements, and lastly, adopt and authorize the HCD director or their designee to sign environmental reviews necessary for projects funded with CDBG funds. Participating cities receive fixed amounts once or twice during the five-year urban county consolidated plan period. The county reaches out to the cities in Monterey County every three years to inquire if they would like to join the urban county. Because we are an entitlement jurisdiction, if they choose not to join, they may be an entitlement area like the City of Salinas, or they could have a project that they want to apply to CDBG on their own. There's two tests to qualify as an entitlement. Population of at least 100,000, which the unincorporated, we, we meet that requirement, but at least 51% of the population is considered low moderate income. Well, the unincorporated area doesn't meet that part, so that's why we created the consortium of the urban county to bring in partners with the cities to meet that requirement. The county issued a notice regarding fund availability in November of 2024, and we conducted an application workshop in December of 2024. The county received 10 applications for public services and for, for public facilities. So, we received NCDAs news update last week. Although President Trump's budget release requests CDBG funding to be cut, we are hopeful that Congress will restore the funding. As shown above, you can see that President Trump has requested the cut in each year of his first term, and we were grateful that it was overturned. Funding for the next annual plan period, fiscal year 25 to 26, that was approved under the federal fiscal year 25 budget, which went into effect in October 1st of 2024. So the funding that's, we're proposing for our next fiscal year has already been approved. So looking at the 25-29 Consolidated Plan, the numbers in black are based on the three-year joint power agreement that we have with the cities that joined the urban county. You can see that Gonzalez is planned for fiscal year 25-26, Marina and Sin City for fiscal year 27, and Greenfield in fiscal year 28. The amounts in red are based on the prospect of the current urban county members remaining as a member. HUD has not released the final numbers for the next fiscal year. Therefore, the recommendations are based on estimates, and once they provide us the actual amount, the numbers would be adjusted based on the amount that, that were allocated. The county did meet the HUD goal of fund remaining budget. Our ratio has to be under 1.5. Our ratio this year is 1.27. What that means is the amount of money that we have allocated towards projects, if the money hasn't been paid out yet, it is considered that we still have that funding, and they don't want us to be above 1.5 of what the current grant amount is. So I work really hard of keeping track of what projects are happening and making sure that they're being implemented and started, and we're getting the invoices to get them paid to keep that number down. By keeping the number down and meeting those goals, that helps our funding. Few years passed, we had reduction in funding because our percentage was over 1.5. The last two years, we've been under the 1.5, so I'm hopeful that this year, our funding will be increased. So, public service applications, the 10 requested 519,575, which is 305,616 more than what is available. We are only able to allocate 15% of the, the annual amount to public services. So, as you can see, Eden Council for Hope and Opportunity requested it under public service recommendations. However, we have the option to fund that under our county admin percentage, which is 20%. So, we fund it under that so that it allows the other agencies more money for the services. By reducing that amount and doing it out of the admin, it, it gives us a little more flexibility to increase some numbers. Two of the public facility recommendations, City of Marina submitted a request for 150,000 to do a bus stop improvement for ADA compliance, and we are recommending that they get the full 150,000. Community Service, or Community Homeless Solutions, they requested 1.2, a little over 1.2 million for a roofing project. Unfortunately, we don't have that much available funding, so we're recommending 156,587. And once I show you the next one, you'll see where all the public facilities make up the amount that is available. The additional request was from the City of Gonzalez utilizing the amount that is part of their agreement, and we're increasing and providing them some of the unincorporated, the county funding, because the City of Gonzalez needs a fire, fire engine. They currently have two, but they're always needing work and service, so they really need a new one. They requested 900,000, and we're recommending 630,566. And the reason that it is like a weird number is because I am providing their allocated amount, which ends in $566, and then we're increasing it by 500,000. So this is a current project that's being funded by CDBG funds. In Los Lomas, there's no sidewalks to get to the bus stop. So, Public Works is doing the project and they're installing sidewalks, and the last amount will be, doo, 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 what's the word? Paved by May 31st, which is the, the picture on the bottom to the left, that's the part that goes up to the bus stop, and that's the last part that will need to be paved. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Don. We'll go to the dais first. Supervisor Alejo?
I'm, I'm good with them overall. I just don't know why Marina wants to repair a bus stop that, where they could be using their money for that. I know they all, these different cities all contribute, and so we try to be fair on the allocation, but why they wouldn't be petitioning MST for, to fund that as part of their capital improvement projects rather than using it for, for this? But if, if that's where they want to spend it, I'm fine with it, but it just seems like that should be something, they should be working with MST to pay and using that money for some other important community project within the city limits.
So although money is going to Marina for their bus stop, that is not the allocated money for the urban county of Marina being a party as a member. So, let me see if I can go back.
And, and so I would just ask, why haven't they asked, talked to Carl Sadoric and MST to see if that's a type of ADA improvement project or compliance project seems to be something that should be addressed through MST funding? And I'm saying that as an MST board member.
Supervisor Alejo, if I may?
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were...
Darby Marshall?
I think Darby wants to...
Darby, go ahead. Yeah. Sorry about that. Supervisor Alejo, Darby Marshall, Housing Program Manager. This application was actually submitted by MST, not the City of Marina. The city does support it because they do want to see the improvements made, but MST, I guess, does not have the capital budget to, to fund these improvements. We have, we have worked with MST in the past to do bus stops in Castroville and Los Lomas as well. So, I, I hope that answers your question. We, MST is the one who put the request forward.
It, it does and it doesn't, right? Because, because we recently had 25 million in MST funds that were unallocated, and we put them towards the Surf Project, right? Because that project had a shortfall. When people, you know, when people say they don't have any money, but we just not, until recently, had a unused multimillion dollar block of funding that wasn't committed to any project, that's where it raises questions, right? This is very limited funding, and, and for, for something that MST should be addressing, they just got additional, we just, we went to a meeting yesterday, we got two additional million dollars in our funding because ridership is going up, and so we got some competitive funding there. And that's, that's why I just, when I see 150,000, there's, I see Los Lomas, right? And these are disadvantaged communities. We did some work back, the Board, this Board of Supervisors did some work back in 2014 when Simona was on, because they, they needed some, some sidewalks and, and some streetlights. I'd like to have these limited funds keep going towards those communities who really need it, where MST has a pretty robust budget, you know, and they're increasing in funding rather than losing. So, that's where I just want to speak to that, because this could be, be, this could go instead to helping disadvantaged communities have more work done, where they've been, we've been able to do it only in small segments, many decades apart from each other.
Okay. So, other members at this point? I'm going to go to Supervisor Church.
Even though I'm, I'm on the, actually, this, this committee here, and we looked at these proposals, I actually popped up here with a question as you were doing the presentation. I think it was Housing Solutions, they were asking for 900,000 for a roof, and we were giving them 150.
The community housing?
Yeah.
Homeless?
Community homeless, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, they were asking for a little over 1.2 million.
1.2 million, that's right. And we're giving them 150,000. They have other funding for that roofing determined? Because, I mean, it's kind of hard to do a roof with 150,000, even a spot onto that. So, I'm trying to see how that fits into the whole project that they need to do.
So when, when I looked at how many buildings they're looking at...
So it's multiple buildings, is that...
It's multiple buildings. There's like 20-something buildings. So, the funding that we would be providing will only do a couple of them.
That, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
See how those lay out. Thanks.
Supervisor Daniels?
Yes, I realize I'm not going to be able to say this for very long, but again, being the new member of the board, having never gone through this presentation before, I just want to rewind because I'm sure that there... want to rewind, because I'm sure that there might be members of the public that have some similar questions in terms of what exactly we're doing here today. So this part, I understand, but we're also adopting the draft of the consolidated plan that helped us get to today, I'm sure, because it informed our decisions. So I just wanted to ask you, you know, where else does the public see the consolidated plan? Is this it? Is this the only time, or were there meetings that, as Supervisor Church just mentioned, he's part of a committee that also addresses this? If you could just give me some backstory, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, so the consolidated plan is done every five years. And so, even though we don't have specific projects for each of those years, we've estimated that what our funding is estimated to receive this year, that we would receive the same amount the next five years. It's showing how much would go to public services, how much goes to admin, county projects, and then how much is being assigned to the different urban county members. So, it's just trying to increase, you know, projects, help infrastructure, it meets ADA compliance, it might be sidewalks, it...
Can I, just to get some clarification though, is it fair to say that we draft this consolidated plan to paint a picture of the state of affairs in Monterey County? To ensure that we're making a case for what our needs are in Monterey County?
Yeah, so, we hire Veronica Taman Associates, and they go through and they pull what the needs are, which our needs in Monterey County are pretty much the same as it was in the previous consolidated plan, where it's providing housing, infrastructure. So, we're still staying on the same kind of path.
Looks like Mr. Spencer has some...
Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the urban county action plan is required in order for us to continue to qualify to receive the grant funding. So is the participation of certain jurisdictions within the county. In order to qualify as an urban county and receive the funds, we partner with jurisdictions like San City, Gonzalez. And that gives us the number of people that we serve in the urban county and the right demographics and social economics to qualify for the program. The program then requires us to do these five-year program documents that demonstrate essentially how we're allocating the funding, what the projected funding is, and which chunks of those fundings go to which services. And that's all dictated by the grant program itself. And then it goes through, you know, a proposal process. We've got lots of community interests making proposals for funding, and then it gets reviewed by the county and the urban county committee to find out what can we fund and how much can we fund out of what we project to get out of that plan and in which categories.
So my point then, and my question is, just then, more globally, I think we need to be using this plan for a variety of purposes, because it paints a devastating picture of the cost burden, in particular when it comes to housing, but it addresses other areas of our infrastructure. But if you just took housing and you looked at the data that is in this report, and you looked at the housing cost burden on seniors, on youth, on immigrant populations, there is a lot of important information in this document, that although sometimes repetitive, was a lot clearer than what we put forward in our housing element in last year. And so I would just encourage us to be utilizing this plan. You know, I would think that our economic development director should also be looking at this plan, when it talks about losing jobs to the north and whatnot. So I just, I'm really appreciative of the plan and that it was put together. And I know we're not getting a presentation of it today, but there is a lot of really important information for the public and for the county government to be aware of that's in this plan. And so I think we should be thinking about ways to use it, you know, beyond just this process and this requirement. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the, Supervisor Askew.
So, thank you for the presentation. And again, I think we're both receiving the, we're conducting a public hearing as part of the process. We do have a draft 160-page plan that summarizes the state of our county, has quite a bit of detailed information about housing needs in our community that are fairly dire. The reality for so many of our residents is dire. I was just added to the committee, the urban, the whole name of the committee, the urban...
Urban County.
County Community Development Committee. So, I'm coming up to speed with my colleague Supervisor Church. So we had one meeting where I think we ended up with more questions than we had answers and time to go into answers for, so we scheduled a second meeting that had to be rescheduled. At that meeting, we were asked to make, you know, to take in the recommendations that staff had made about the funding requests for this year one, which, you know, I think we put forward as staff had made some, already gone through some recommendations. So we're comfortable putting those forward. However, moving forward, I think there is a lot of, I have some additional questions and would like for the committee to take a closer look at how we are, if indeed the feds continue to fund this program, how we're best utilizing this, these dollars in ways that connect the dots more directly to the county programs and services that we know have needs. So for instance, when we talk about housing needs, we have our homeless service director, we have, that's working on, you know, home key projects that are directly tied to housing, that have direct needs. We have our Kent's Court projects that have direct housing needs. We have blight removal projects in Public Works that have direct tie to needs. We have, like, there are very specific projects that we know, I was just talking to Roxanne, texting with Roxanne last week about the reality that we have for every low-income housing apartment that's built in our county, and there are dozens of them. In order for any resident to apply for low-income housing, you have to fill out a separate application for every single apartment that you apply for. And then you have to maintain your address and maintain a current application every time you move. So for an unhoused resident or an unstably housed resident who's trying to get into stable housing, every time you apply for low-income housing, you're filling out a new application and then trying to maintain that application every time you're moving. So for someone who's in our homeless service information system, our HMIS cars system, we're paying for, through all of, I don't know where that list of the housing service providers, we're paying for case managers to fill out dozens of low-income housing applications for someone, and then maintain the current application every time that individual moves to a new shelter or moves to a new location with a current address. But there's a different system where we could then create a single application where someone fills it out once and it feeds into all of the, like, there are solutions to some of these really big problems and challenges, but we've got to start connecting our dots better than what we're doing right now. And I think that this is one of those funding sources that we're not utilizing in a way that is as coordinated as it could and should be. And so I'm hoping that through the committee, we can maybe think and talk about how this five-year plan can maybe think in a bigger, broader way about doing that. I also, I just want to recognize, we've got some agencies that have been receiving money year in and year out through this particular pot of money. And so whenever we talk about realigning or moving money around, for the organizations that have been, through at least the public services side of this, receiving money through the CDBG funding, you know, any type of changes, you know, that is a scary thing to talk about. So however we have those conversations, like, that's a reality that has to be considered. But I just wanted, I wanted to share a little bit with my colleagues about the conversation that we had at the committee and with staff, and sort of where I think we can and should be thinking about how to better align some of these pots. The other conversation that we had in the health, housing, homelessness, and human services committee was looking at all of the different contracts with nonprofits that all flow out of the social services department. And at some point, we'll figure out how to get a copy of that distributed, but we have dozens and dozens of different nonprofit, nonprofits who are contracted to provide services just simply through social services, through all of the different sources of funding. And even social services was saying, you know, we don't all coordinate, because if it's a CDBG pot of money that one contractor's going through, if it's a different pot of money, that maybe, we could have one nonprofit partner who's contracted with Public Works, contracted with social services through one pot, contracted with social services through, you know, four or five different pots of money, that nonprofit partner then has five or six different grants or contracts with the county. It's staff time that's happening where they're managing four or five different contracts with the county. All of that requires staff time that's duplicative and not actually providing the services that our community needs. So, there's just, there's so many pieces of this, and I think this for me was a wake-up call that we need to be thinking about some of this in a bigger way. $50,000 is a lot, but if it's 50, 50, 50, 50, 50, and that nonprofit now has to have a full-time person managing five different contracts that are each $50,000, it's not actually maybe the most thoughtful way for us to be delivering services here in Monterey County. So, having said all of that, we can do public comment, but I'll make a motion to approve this as it's currently drafted, which allows us to move forward. But I will also express the intent that there's more conversation to be had here, and that I'm hopeful that we can continue working to better align and dial in how we can match the intent of CDBG, our CDBG program, with the rest of the county's priorities around focusing on housing as a priority need for the county.
All right, let's go to public comment. I'm going to open it up here, see if anybody wants to make a comment in the room. I'm going to go to Zoom.
Esther Malkin.
Esther.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to ask, I'm not sure if your process, but how much public input you guys collect on the CDBG program and what the voters and the residents of the county might be interested in voicing their opinions on? I know that here in the city of Monterey, the staff holds numerous meetings so that the public can understand CDBG and how it's distributed, and what portions go to admin costs of the county that are paid by CDBG and a number of other things. So, just want to put that out there in case you don't do engagement, that I think it would be a good idea to do some. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Any other hands up? All right, seeing other hands up, nobody coming forward in the room? We'll bring it back. I saw Supervisor Alejo's hand up.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to say this. I think with limited CDBG dollars, I think this is a limited funding source where we can be doing what we've been saying, we've been wanting to do more of, which is focusing limited dollars where it's needed the most. And sometimes when we have groups that actually can make an application, they get hurt, and the disadvantaged communities that aren't speaking up for them are not getting on the list. And I want to speak to Marina again, because out of the $25 million, this was a big fight we had at Tamsi, and it was about a state grant for transit dollars. And it was a fight because we wanted to put 25 million, or not 25 million for rail, but I think 17 was for Paharo Train Station. And there were people that didn't want to put the money there. But the Tamsis split that money and gave 25 million to MST, which then went into an unassigned, an uncommitted fund balance that just sat there. Despite the fun, despite the things that were said during that meetings, MST, the money sat there, and then when there was a shortfall after the big fight for the transit project in Marina that went to Coastal Commission, and we, as a board, were supportive to give all that money, 25 million, to Marina for the transit project. And now, we're going to give another 150 out of the limited CDPGs on top of that. How is that fair from a financial lens? Where 150 million, like I said, to go to Los Lomas, going to the other project where we have the Mobile Home Park, they have poor landscaping at the Mobile Home Park in Paharo. That's our property. Well, we could enhance that disadvantaged little neighborhood that is owned by county, we can make their life better, put some picnic tables, put a little gazebo, barbecue pit, other amenities that they don't have there. And when I, when we talked after Paharo, staff said, we only had enough money to make the repairs, we didn't have money for landscaping. Well, here's some money, where we could have done some added amenities there, and we're not doing it. We were in Chular the other day, and there's a lot of needs there. Just go down the list. Casterville, another community whose sidewalks and another landscaping could be improved there. That's where I'm saying, with these limited dollars, this is where we could say, let's focus it where we know, it's a little bit of money, but little by little, we could put these additional projects in these disadvantaged communities versus one where this project is now over $100 million, and we gave all the, that particular fund to one community, which I was supportive of, but at the same time, now we're going to give more money on top of it for additional transit projects. That's where I, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's equitable. And this is where, as a board, we could say, now we're going to redirect that money to help another community that could really use it.
I'll concur with Supervisor Alejo. I'm comfortable, because he sits on that board and knows how much money they have socked away in different places. And I'll share, I know in San Ardo, we've had the opportunity, we'll formally announce soon, even though I'm doing this in public, we're going to redo the school lights through private grants to actually allow them to have the equivalent of a park, and we're going to cut a hole into the fence, and so those kids will have a place to play at night. The biggest concern I've heard so far from parents is, yeah, but are kids walking there at night? Not the safest. We are building sidewalks with a state grant, but those sidewalks will not be lit. So I'm like, 150 would go a long way to putting lights, those solar streetlights that we did in San Lucas, above those sidewalks to keep that community truly walkable and safe for those kids. It's hard to, it's hard to swallow the 150 hearing 25 million was set aside and dedicated to, big numbers, and it's a little frustrating to hear that number. I'll go down, I think, did you have your hand up Supervisor Daniels? Okay, Supervisor Church.
So I would be willing to go that way too. And again, particularly since Supervisor Alejo is on this, on the MST board, and, you know, they can pull 150,000 out to work on their own infrastructure, and if this could be redirected to a community that really needs it, that's been underserved, you know, whatever, whatever it should be evaluated. What is our timeline that we have to make, is there any thing we're running up against on allocation of these funds for projects?
We just have to submit the plan to HUD, which it's usually like within the next week, but I do know that they have, they have some timing that's kind of off. I want to say the last time that I heard that it had to be submitted in July.
I just don't want to pull 150 out and kind of have it in abeyance right here when the federal government is looking for anything they can do to cut. So I'm, but you know, I'm...
Project-wise, I'm wondering if we could say, you know, obviously remove the 150 from that and allocate it to Public Works for implementing either sidewalks or lighting in a community, and they can determine by application, we're going to give that grace to Randy and team, given it's Public Works Week, we'll trust Public Works with that call and allocate it to a place.
Supervisor, if I may, Darby Marshall?
Go ahead, Darby.
So, we can hold those funds in abeyance, but it's not as easy as just allocating them to Public Works. We would have to go back through a community solicitation process, where we would invite other projects to come and apply, and Public Works would certainly be eligible. And then we would have to rate and rank them. be eligible. And then we would have to rate and rank them and then go back through a public process to amend the annual plan. It can be done.
It could be done, but why not, why not add, add more sidewalks in Las Lomas? We already know that, why aren't we speaking up for the, the housing project in Paharo? When we requested that years ago, we, we said, can we enhance the, the landscaping of those permits? Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. I'm saying staff, I'm saying staff, why, if we know the need is there-
I'm hearing we can. I heard we could put it in abeyance. So let's, I mean, I know it's more of a process, but I'm hearing that from this board, there's a desire Supervisor.
I have a question for staff. In terms of these projects, the way we did it in my former county was that there was a list of projects, such as what you're saying, you know, whether it's Paharo landscaping, or Aroma's sidewalks, or lighting, or even storm drains in communities that need them that are unincorporated. But I know this is a partnership of sorts with those four communities that are involved, the four cities. The other cities that are not listed receive their own dollars independently. So is there a list that you have, the above the line are the ones that are funded, the below the lines are the ones that are up next? If one of these top ones do not go through, because there's ways for you to amend the consolidated plan as well. Whatever you submit today, certainly over the course of five years will change potentially. So I'm just curious if you have that going list, not just these that you're presenting today, that there's some that are below the line.
Currently, currently no. When we posted the notice regarding fund availability and we let Public Works know also if they had any projects that would be coming up, that they would need some funding for, we were told no. So there, there isn't a list to go to.
If I may add-
I'm going to go to Supervisor Askew.
I think when I, so this was part of the conversation that we had at the last committee. And I think that what we realized is that we need to work on this and that we need a list like this, and that we need to be proactive in making sure that we're identifying in advance what these projects might be and not simply waiting on putting out a request and then hoping that something shows up on application. We know that the needs are there. We know that the county has a long CIP list. We know that the, the needs in our unincorporated communities are real. We know that the needs in Marina are real and that there are a lot of significant needs in, in, in all of these communities that are, that are, that are, that are pressing for, for those, for those residents in these communities. But we can't just wait for, for folks to show up. We need to go out and be more re-
Proactive.
Proactive, not reactive. Thank you. And so that was something that became clear in the committee, the first committee meeting that I sat in. And so the, the desire was to have another committee meeting, make sure that the, that we're, we're understanding and working more, more, more proactively with the, with the staff to create these lists and then identify, mapping out how to, how to make sure that those things are happening. So, so yes, the need is there and we know that the projects are there. How we, how we then move forward, I think is, is a real question.
So at this time, what I want to do is go ahead and just for purposes of legal, say we've done a public hearing, we've heard from the public on this, we've opened it. At this point, we're going to close it. And I would make a motion that we approve staff recommendation, but hold the 150 slotted for the MST project in abeyance at this time to be put to another project as formerly done through a process of inquiry in the public agencies eligible to bring back recommended projects to this body. I see a second from Lejo. Hearing no more discussion. I'll say all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion carries. I do want to thank our representatives from the city of Gonzalez who sat with us patiently this morning and just say that the fire engine that we're purchasing is really important for that community for several reasons. We've recently lost lives due to fires in that community. More than that, as we look at redoing the bridge over the Salinas River outside of Gonzalez, we're going to need additional coverage because response times could be over 30 minutes to have to go up to Chular, cut around and back down within that fire district, which includes rural areas. And so appreciate this application to be able to give that coverage to the rural areas during that critical time. So thank you for being here. And Esther, I did want to stay, there was a question there about what our public process was, and there are committee meetings required. And then we do hold two hearings here on this item as well before it is approved. And so I recommend you reach out to members of the committee, including Supervisor Askew and Church at this time, as well as staff, which is Darby Marshall and Don Yonamitsu, to get additional information about how to get engaged and involved in that process.
Can I give a little more information regarding that?
So after we do the notice of fund availability with our urban county members, we actually went to each of their city council meetings to inform them of what the CDBG process is, what the funds can be utilized for, so that they could give their community more information to be a part of the conversation, to know, to know what the money can be used for. So and then we end up running a public notice. And then it's also put online and the plans are provided to each of the urban counties to provide to their community also.
Thank you, Don. All right. And at this time, we're going to consider that item concluded. Thank you very much. And we're going to jump into other board matters, matters, beginning with the referral matrix. And I see that we have a new referral. I'm going to go to, is that the CAO to read that one out?
Yes, we did receive a new referral from Supervisor Daniels, and this is related to the no parking signs on Bixby Bridge. The request is for a review of the signage and to extend the signage period. So that has been assigned over to the Public Works Department.
All right. So at this time, we don't take action on it, but I'm going to see if Supervisor Daniels wants to make any comments on that introduced referral.
Yeah, just to be clear, actually, it is a measure that was implemented during the Rocky Creek work. And it is, there already are no parking signs on the Old Coast Road. It's a K rail that's covered in mesh that makes it easier for law enforcement to enforce the no parking restrictions that are already there. And so it's an extension of that past the potential completion this summer, if it is going to happen this summer of the Rocky Creek slip out, while we can continue to have conversations with Coastal Commission and others about a long-term solution.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Daniels, question, but this isn't to prohibit parking at that, that highly desired area just before crossing Bixby?
No, that there are parking enforcement measures that are already in place at that location. This is to extend the ones that are on the Old Coast Road that is the county property. There's no part, there's no parking and some parking signage that tells you things like parallel park only. I mean, yes, parallel park only, do not go in and out. And so this would be an extension of those measures that are there now, past the, the opening of the road, which may happen as early as July. But in my last conversation with Caltrans, I don't know that that's, it's going to be that early. That would be the hope for, for, for getting that road open full time, both directions. And so it's going to give us some, some wiggle room to keep the measure that the Public Works Department put in place in longer until we can come up with a more global solution.
All right. That item being concluded, we're going to proceed to our referral responses. I see Mr. Spencer is sitting in the box. And we're going to receive a preliminary response to a legacy referral from Supervisor Adams from 23, and that is regarding obtaining data on renters and evictions in unincorporated Monterey County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I believe it's still, oh, good afternoon. My name's Craig Spencer. I'm with Housing and Community Development, and I am providing preliminary response on Supervisor, Supervisor Adams' referral on renter census data and eviction data in a way of collecting data to inform policy decisions, particularly around housing. Supervisor Adams did submit this some time ago, and we've been working with the Sheriff's Office and internally and on how to obtain that data. And we have collected a significant amount of information from census data that I'll review briefly. Some of the data will inform certain policy decisions. We selected the data that we're reporting on, and I'll go over the reasons we provided that data. There is other data available through the Census Bureau, and there is a margin of error, but there's different things we can report on through that census data. And we did coordinate with the Sheriff's Office on evictions, which I'll also cover in this report. So we did, through the United States Census Bureau, who does a survey every 10 years, we identified a number of data points. There's actually American Community Surveys, which is done annually. That is part of the information available on their website and can be searched for geographically and other ways. So we did find that about 30% of the residents in Monterey County unincorporated areas are renters, with the remainder being property owners or people who live in owned buildings, condos, units of that sort. That helps, I'll go back one slide, that, that kind of sets the table for, you know, what is the mix of renters versus owners in, in the county. Digging into the data further and, and looking at what units are out there that are vacant, both rented and owner, ownership, I want to say owner occupied, but they're not occupied because they're vacant. We, there are a number of categories that people report on in their census. Some of them are vacant rental properties. Some of them are vacant owned properties because they're seasonal ownership, someone's vacation home. They may be vacation rentals if they have permits now. They, they might be houses for sale that no one's living in right now, migrant worker housing that is occupied part of the year, and the catchall category of other vacant, which is, you know, things that don't fall in those other categories. So we do see high numbers of seasonally or occasionally used units in Monterey County and an increase. We, there are two columns here. One is from 2010 and the other is from 2023. So you can see by comparison which, which categories are going up or down or staying the same. Another question we thought might be of interest that you can answer through the, the community surveys are, you know, what is the cost burden for renters in particular in, in the county? And these are by income ranges. They're about $500 ranges. And you can see that, and by the way, the definition of cost burden is spending more than 30% of your annual income on housing. Severely cost burdened is spending more than 50% of your income on, on cost burden. Severely cost burdened is spending more than 50% of your annual income on housing. So you can see that the numbers roll towards the higher ends as you go on in time here. That has a lot to do with inflation and market conditions, but the amount of monthly rent is growing over time. You can also, this breaks down that what I just defined, the, the cost burden relationship. So the bottom two rows here, those would be cost burdened housing. That's nearly 50% of, of the households who rent are cost burdened in the county because of the high rents. And we have statistics that show at a, at a very grand, not granular level, a broad level, what might be overcrowding conditions, or the number of occupants per room in, in a unit. The, the, the more occupied from top to bottom, more than two occupants per room, those numbers increased significantly from 2010 to 2023. And that starts to show you where, you know, housing costs go up and more people have to live together to afford their rent. Yes.
Sorry, the 2010 is the 33, 5, 8, 2. What was the date you said? I can't, 2015?
Yes.
And then 2023 on this?
Yes. I did say 2010. Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, I was just looking for the headings. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we coordinated with the Sheriff's Office, and I'm hoping Nicole is on Zoom from the Sheriff's Office in case you have questions about this. But there was a point in time, so prior to, I have the typo here, 2022 should be that top line, not 2025. Before 2022, there were COVID pandemic related restrictions on evictions in place. So we started with that year. They have gone up slightly, but stayed fairly consistent over time. I, I added on the side here from what the first slide I presented on the census data, there's about 9,900 rental units in the county. So fairly high numbers. I am told by the Sheriff's Office that evictions are served only when courts have, it's been through a court process and approved and ordered by the court. So this doesn't really tell us all of what's happening behind it. The Sheriff's Office does not collect data on the reasons for the evictions. And, you know, we, we don't know how many other situations there might have been that didn't go to that level through the courts. So, but we do have the information on how many, how many evictions the Sheriff's Office has been involved in annually since So we are aware that many other jurisdictions have rental registry programs. And because the referral requested a way to collect and track data on housing, we, we're addressing this as part of our referral response. A rental registry is something where landlords would have to register their rental properties with a jurisdiction like the county. And they would have to provide a lot of the information. We, we've shown in the surveys, that would be more specific. It would say exactly what the rent is. It would say exactly the number of bedrooms, who owns them, what's occupied. And they would have to register those units and keep up that registration requirement if we were to do that. That would provide us with more specific data with less margin of error and more specifics about the cases or just decision points, data points that the board may want in informing policy decisions, should you go that way. It has been controversial in other, other cities and counties within the, within the state. It usually comes with a registration fee and some paperwork requirements. And it would require the county to adopt an ordinance that requires registration. And we would then have to be ensuring that people are complying with that requirement. We would then need to find a way to track and monitor all the data we get and share it with the public in, in ways. So that may require some additional resources if that were to fall on HCD to, to oversee such a program. So this is just a preliminary report. We are recommending that we continue to use the survey data. And if there are other data points that you want us to look for, we can. Alternatively, you can direct HCD to begin developing a rental registry program for the unincorporated areas. And that is an overview of the data. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Nobody's chomping at the bit, so I'm going to go ahead and take this out to the public, invite folks to use a raise hand function, star nine via landline to be recognized. See nobody in room, we'll go online. And I do see Esther first. So Esther will give you the ability to unmute yourself, and you've got two minutes.
Thank you again. Speaking as the founder of Monterey County Renters United, I wish I could see a timer so I could see how long I have to speak. But thank you for following up on this referral from a couple of years- But thank you for following up on this referral from a couple of years ago. This is really important data for all of you to understand in your jurisdictions specifically because your jurisdictions vary so much. We have some, for example, four and five that are heavy, heavy renter occupied in general. And in your report, it looks like 50% of all renters are cost burdened. Those are the people that are becoming homeless. You know, these are, affordable rent is homelessness prevention. You mentioned that their overcrowding has increased. Overcrowding only happens if landlords are approving the additional people to stay there. And that's how they take advantage of people who are desperate for housing. Otherwise, they, you know, every adult that wants to live in a unit has to put in an application that varies between $50 and $100 per adult. And not many can afford that. There are a number of, of, you know, issues when it comes to rent costs that you could look into, understand and address to help this big portion of residents in the county. I want to make it clear that renters are permanent renter class now. With home affordability out of reach, these are people that are going to be renters forever. And they need to be considered in your policymaking and they are voters. Again, more some of your districts than others.
We're at time. Thank you. We're going to go to the next caller, Michelle Clary.
Yeah, hi. The issue here with the rent is, again, people on social security have fixed incomes and rents continue to go up. I had to actually buy a place for my parents to rent stabilize them, to put them in a place that they can afford to pay the utilities alone. So it's a growing problem. And again, you know, as, you know, landlord rights is harder and harder. Renters and squatters have more rights sometimes than landlords. And everybody blames the landlords for buying the houses a long time ago in order to keep the cost down. But again, when the county of Monterey keeps increasing our property taxes and then the fire insurance goes up, you know, to be able to keep your insurance and all your stuff, it makes it very hard to keep costs down. In places like Nevada and other places, if you provide a rental below market value, they actually take your taxes down, right? You're helping rent stabilize people. Rent, landlords aren't getting anything back. You know, everybody thinks that you just make your money. Sometimes you're just paying your mortgage and you're trying to offset some costs. And there's a lot of liabilities there. So you will continue to see people selling those rental properties because it's no longer, it's no longer, it's too much risk and too much liability. So you're going to end up with a bunch of apartments and boxes. And again, when you are seeing all these multiple people and residents, sometimes as a landlord, people just move people in and it's very hard to get them out. So again, remember, you know, all these rentals that are out there also impact homeowners and people around with multiple cars, not enough infrastructure on the roads and, and crime. So again, it's a, it's a big problem. And I'm really interested to see how you guys continue to work with this data and what happens with rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm going to bring it back to the board. Supervisor Daniels.
Thank you, Chair Lopez, and thank you very much, Craig, Mr. Spencer, for this presentation. I really do appreciate it. It's something that I've actually always been very interested in in terms of something that we're not able to find out and that I know people are interested in. If it's 30% of unincorporated Monterey County approximately are renters, it would be really wonderful to know more specifically which parts of the unincorporated Monterey County are facing the most cost burden. And I'm just going to go back to the presentation that we just had because that report, again, it was so, I mean, it's not like it's new information. But when we get down to the granular level, like what are the differences and who's being impacted more by things like overcrowding, overcrowding? When we see that 50% of the county is cost burdened. When we looked at housing vouchers in that and saw that there were 4,442 housing choice vouchers and then another 4,091 people on the waiting list for, I mean, it's like almost the same amount of people that we've actually been able to give a voucher to need a voucher. And then looking at our housing stock and 80% or 81% of our housing stock are single family homes. Like, these are all things, I think, and that, you know, renters, you know, tend to, well, I don't know if there's a correlation. I was about to say something between apartments and single family homes. But obviously, if we have 80% single family homes, we have a lot of people renting single family homes in Monterey County. But lastly, a point you just made about rising rents. These, these tables that you show demonstrate that rents are going up. At the same time, we know that incomes aren't going up. So we have challenges in Monterey County. You did mention what it would take to try to drill down on those challenges. And I think I, like everyone on this dais, want our county staff to continue working on the housing element to finish the short term rental ordinance, you know, to do the things that, that we've been working on to, to at least continue to address in ways that we have been addressing the shortage of housing, right? But that said, I'm really appreciative that Supervisor Adams at least made this request for this information. And I want to address one of the public comments that was made having, you know, worked in, in homeless services, like the number one, and this was in the report that we just read and it was, I think, in your report just now. The number one thing in Monterey County that leads to homelessness is not being able to pay the rent. And so, you know, we've got to do something. I don't know what that is as, as a board, but I just want to be on the record of saying, I really appreciate this presentation. And I'm, I hope it's the beginning of a conversation, not the end of a conversation. You mentioned the registry. I'm not suggesting we do a registry right now in terms of the staff time and what you have on your plate that we need to finish in order to actually start addressing it on the housing side, the problems that we face with building housing in Monterey County. But I am, I am appreciative of all this data. And the evictions, I just also want to say one more thing about, it doesn't, of course, account for self evictions and fear and intimidation and other things that might close the door on somebody's home and have them pack up their bags and walk out. But please do continue to provide the data to us. And I would think a regular report because if we see changes, like an increase in evictions, it's, it's very problematic and, and we need to be aware of that. Thank you.
Supervisor Leo.
Well, I want to follow up on what my colleague Supervisor Daniel said. I know what we need to do. We need to build more housing, period. The greatest solution to homelessness is building more housing and all types. And we do have some, and certainly finishing our, getting our housing element certified, that's a big piece of that. But then to actually get the groundbreaking done and get projects done. We just heard another community member earlier speak about Gonzalez. We should be building more housing in Gonzalez and Solidad and Salinas, just along the one-on-one quarter. There could be 8,000 units of housing, of which 20% more or less, if they're inclusionary, would benefit lower income individuals and families. That's what we should be doing. We should be building more workforce housing, as we've been doing on the ag side, hopefully more on the education and hospitality side. So we got the examples. We know what we need to do. We just got to help as the local government facilitate that process, try to do it as quickly as possible. And sometimes that means also letting our HCD department just do just that, not put more on their plate, more and more on the plate. But let's focus, let us do what we want to do without, with limited resources. If you keep putting more, that means your energy and your, your staff overall bandwidth is compromised when, when we add more on there. And then I, I look at Solidad and I bring it up at every opportunity because somebody said earlier today, they're not going to be able to afford it. That's what they said when they had that development in Solidad. And guess out of all 12 cities in Monterey County, you know, has the most owner occupied homeownership? Solidad. I said, we should be replicating homeownership in Solidad because I think they're like at 90% versus Salinas is at 50 or 48%. That data is already available out there. You could, you could get that, get that data available. But, you know, out of all the board members here, I think I'm the only renter and I'm the only former board member in my previous life who actually did landlord tenant law at CRLA and as a neutral attorney at the Superior Court at the, at the, at the Self Help Center. And in those years of practicing and, and legal aid, we had limited resources. I had to really pick and choose my cases, right, which were the most compelling. And I did defense on a lot of different things, including discrimination. So I've seen those cases, but at the Self Help Center, I also, I used to help landlords too because we helped both sides. And I've seen the egregious side on the tenant side. I remember very clearly there was a case where an elderly couple had a rental unit. They depended on that for their retirement, an older low income Latino couple. And there was a renter who hadn't paid rent for four months. And, and they, they in good faith said, oh, they're going to pay next month, next month, next month. That never happened. And then they had to hire an attorney that cost $5,000 to $10,000. Then they have to go serve, they have to get the shares to serve the paperwork. They get another month, five days to answer. They get a court hearing a month later. And then on top of that, they could ask for a hardship stay and they could get another 30 months in that apartment. And so at the end of it all, that couple was out tens of thousands of dollars. Those cases do exist. And I've seen the cases also where they're getting evicted because they've damaged the place, violated the contract, then they've, they've destroyed the place. And some destroyed it when they got evicted. They, they created more damage on their way out. So this is not just a, a black and white picture. There's, there's, there's difficulties on both sides. And only if you practice, you know, the complexity of this law. California has the greatest tenant protections out of any state in the United States, more than any other place. And has a very strict eviction process, right? That, that in order for landlord to evict somebody, they must follow it to a T. Otherwise, they get to court and the judge will throw it out for not following a procedural step. Each, each one is critical. And that's why when I, when I see these, these ideas about rental registry, it does nothing. As a former landlord tenant attorney, does nothing to house any person in our county. When you start seeing a fee, like in Salinas, it was a $45 per house that's not subject to the ordinance, 170 per unit per year for a house that is. Guess who that gets passed to? The tenant. It's not going to be the landlord. The tenant ends up paying that additional cost. You put the pressure for their rents to go up even more because the landlord is going to pass that cost to the tenant. And it does nothing to house somebody. If somebody's facing eviction, it does nothing to help them stay housed. The debt is collected and what? What, what does it say? Oh, we have this many rental units in, in any jurisdiction. It doesn't, it does zero collecting that fee. The story Salinas showed, they had to hire three staff, collected over $1 million a year. For what? It didn't house anybody. I'd rather put money towards building housing, provide a grant to legal aid services to defend tenants because our, some of our legal services are restricted. Who could they help? My former office, CRLA, can only help low income individuals. And then on top of that, they can't help undocumented because of their federal funding stream. So, so when you talk about housing, there's, there's strategies that could, that are meaningful to tenants. And there's some that, that look good on paper, they're well intended, but they do, do nothing to house people or keep people housed. And this is one of those examples. And so I'm just not, not a fan of it. And I don't, and I'm not at a point where I want to put additional major burden of collecting data on a department like yours when we have a lot of other priorities that, that actually when they get done, they do move the needle towards getting people housed in our county. And I think that's where we should stay mission focused.
Supervisor Askew.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess we all bring our own lived experience to everything that we're doing. And we bring the experiences of the community that we represent into the spaces that we, we serve. And this is interesting data and it adds to the perspective that, that I'm, you know, coming from the Board of Monterey Peninsula Unified School District, where we serve, you know, an affluent community, where I had served an affluent community, but yet had 20% of our students who were qualified as McKinney Vento homeless children, which was shocking data to receive. But then unraveling that data and realizing that we had tremendous overcrowding in the community of Seaside and Marina with many families living, multiple families to a home with one family per bedroom. And, and, and a district that then ended up opening up a, a safe parking program in intervening years because so, so many families were living in their vehicles, having been then pushed out of that overcrowded housing into their cars, where they now have, you know, children living in cars on the Monterey Peninsula, literally miles from some of the wealthiest property in this country. So, so to see the data for the unincorporated county sort of broadens my perspective. The district that I serve, we don't have a lot of unincorporated housing. So it's, it's, it is interesting to see it. We've built a tremendous amount of housing in District Four. We're continuing to build housing in District Four thanks to the county's partnership and support of what's happening in East Garrison. We've just committed to the specific plan. We're building more chief style low income housing. We've brought more market rate housing online. The city of Marina is building additional housing. Light Fighter Village for veterans just came online. We're breaking ground. We just broke ground on Campus Town in Seaside, which will be additional affordable housing and market rate housing. So committed to building additional housing 100% and finding all the, the creative solutions to getting the water that's necessary to do that. The other personal experience that I bring to the table and as we talk about this is as someone who has lived in 20 different homes and moved every year growing up, knowing that, you know, every year when someone showed up at the door and the rent was going to be raised and that meant you pack up again and you move to the next property somewhere. It meant changing schools. It meant the fear of changing schools. It meant the uncertainty of all the things that go with that. And, and so as an adult, having now lived in my, having had the, the privilege of living in the same house now and the lack of anxiety that comes with that, I realized that when we talk about affordable housing, I can look at the fact that the mortgage that I now pay is less than what my mom pays for her single room studio where her rent goes up and my mortgage effectively goes down or stays the same from year to year. And so the conversation about affordability, and when I look at the dollar amounts of what occupied units paying more than $3,000 for gross rent, went from 659 units in 2015 to 3,662 units in 2023. Knowing that those individuals just going down my street, right? I can say those folks who've lived there for more than 20 years versus those who have just, who are trying to make a life and trying to, you know, rent a property, the disparities that exist are becoming greater and greater and greater and greater over time. So the, the data that you've presented here is, it actually, it provides a lot of information, but it raises a lot of additional questions for me about who, who owns the rentals that we're talking about? Where are they in the county? How long is it that people are living in a rental? If someone's, and for my experience was, we lived in a house for a year, maybe 18 months at best, and then we were moving somewhere different. And whether it was my sisters and I sharing a room or, you know, maybe sometimes we would get our own room. But maybe that was, you know, from year to year different. The folks that I met with from here in Chambers last week, you know, there were folks from Salinas who were saying, no, I, I grew up in the same, I've lived in the same house that my parents have rented for 20 years here in Salinas. That was different than my experience. So I'm curious. I don't, I don't know. And curiosity about, you know, was that increase from, you know, like how much has the rent been going up over time? And if it was someone who's been living in the same property for 20 years, I have to assume that the person who owned that property, their mortgage isn't tripling over that 20 years, the mortgage is going down. So I just have, I have, I have a lot of questions. And for me, there's this bigger, bigger policy question. And for me, there's this bigger, bigger policy question that we're never going to solve at a local level. It really is a state and federal policy question. That is, is housing fundamentally something that we want as a place for people to live for safe shelter and stable shelter? Or is it something that we have as a financial investment? And until we can answer that question, there's just so many of these other pieces of the puzzle that I don't know how we begin to solve at a local city or county level. And we can, we can spin our wheels all day long. And we are, and we're going to do what we can. We're going to build more housing. We're going to provide, you know, a fair housing contract. We're going to look for tenant rights. But when we have a vacancy rate of 15% here in Monterey County, when To Walloomy County has a vacancy rate of 25%, it tells me something's not matching up. Like something's not quite right. When we have children sleeping in cars, like that's not right. Something's not right. When the inclusionary housing ordinances that we have in place mean that we either have housing being built for folks who are living under the poverty line, who have to meet income criteria that are so, so, so low, or market rate where you've got to make, what, $250,000 a year to even be able to qualify for a market rate property? And there's this gap in the middle that's so large, like, you know, an elephant can fit through it? I don't know. What we're doing isn't working. It hasn't been working. So something has to shift. Something has to change. A rental registry isn't going to fix that. A rent subsidy, we did $50 million during COVID, it's not going to fix that. So I guess the final question, so I appreciate the information. I think it is a conversation, and we've got to continue this conversation. And I hope this is the beginning of a broader ongoing conversation. But I guess the other question that I have is, and that I would love to hear more about, is what is the state's role in addressing the broader question of how policy and incentives for housing ensure that housing is something that's incentivized for people to live in versus housing as an incentive for investment and financial benefit for those who have versus increasing disparities in wealth acquisition?
Sure. It's been mentioned, you know, that what we really need is more housing, and that's exactly right. But it's, that's how it's going to address the issue. But as I've said many times, it needs to be smaller homes, smaller lots. We need to look at our own ordinances and kind of review and see what we're adding unnecessary burdens and costs to on issues that aren't health and safety. And 20% inclusionary housing does not meet the needs of what we need, which really, if you look at our housing element, the need is 50 to 60%. And those, that's how we go about dealing it. And I'm, you know, I'm hoping we're going to be able to, in the near future, really start to look into our code a little bit better, what we do in ordinances, and really see what we can do and try to, try to create housing that encourages smaller homes so that people aren't multiple families into a room. And one of the things is, is just, I'll use an example, our inclusionary housing ordinance. And that's not just the 20% I'm referring to, but the part in there that says that, you know, your inclusionary housing has to be the same size, look the same as the, as the market rate housing. And you just, you just can't build 2,000 square foot homes and call them affordable in this world. You know, they need to be smaller homes. That's, there's a lot of older homes out there that are smaller. And people lived in that with larger families. In my view, that's just the way, the direction we need to go.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I, I just want to respond because I feel like I bring something new to this board and different than perhaps the configuration before in terms of, you know, just really wanting to work with every single person on this dais, on this issue. And I genuinely mean that. And we all have different perspectives in terms of what is, what is the solution for our various parts of the county? And my pledge to all of you is to truly respect what you know and what you've experienced. And I'm sorry, I'm going to get emotional, but I have had a really difficult weekend on this very topic. And it comes from my experience in my district. And two instances where I heard some of the most ugly speech about affordable housing. And, and so I want, I want to be very clear that that commentary is part of the stage in terms of how people feel about affordable housing. I'm also dealing in my office with multiple requests for support to help them get housed. And of all of these requests, these are the parents of the people I grew up with. These are my classmates who are fortunately in Supervisor Askew's district in the South Asian Army. And so when we build housing also in District Five, which we have September Ranch, I guess those homes are going to go for about $6 million a house. And I think everyone on this dais was there for the ribbon cutting and the golden shovel that went into the ground. $6 million is my guess, if you look at housing costs and what those properties are going to go for. So my pledge to you, when I say, let's make this the beginning, the beginning conversation, the first conversation about the cost of living and keeping people in their homes so they don't become homeless, is that I will be as open minded as I can be about your district and, and the housing that, that you say you need in your district. And I just hope that you can be the same in mine because we have to keep people in their homes. And I am in agreement, I think, with everybody on this dais about where we are today and what we want Mr. Spencer to be working on right now. We know the reality in HCD, and we want you to keep, we want you to get the housing element done. We want to finish short term rentals, everything that relates. We want you to process the applications and the great ideas that are coming in and get those units built. But we have to continue this conversation about, you know, our senior citizens that are moving from roofs to automobiles, our children who are living, you know, in conditions that is not conducive to learning, conditions that's not conducive to getting an education. It's making the situation worse. And, and we need to just come up with a pathway for sustainability in the parts of our community that where the jobs are. And, and I will continue to have the conversations that bring me to tears because they are so ugly and so awful and be the champion in the fifth district for building more housing. But it's not the only thing we have to focus on. And so I hope you'll all work with me on, you know, if the desire isn't a registry, and I'm not even sure 30% of unincorporated Monterey County being renters, that's, that's the solution. But we got to figure out what it is, and we got to keep people in their homes as well as build the units. Thank you.
So I want to take an opportunity just to say, I'm with you, Kate. I hear you. I've been screaming this from the top of my lungs and talking about the stories, including especially the mother Anna from Gonzalez, who talked about being evicted from that laundry room. I've told her story in so many different rooms. And I've put my own classmates in homeless housing from King City to Salinas. And it's absolutely heartbreaking. I, in fact, told part of that story to Felix yesterday. Didn't make the story that he ran on the new project, well, the project we're trying to see through in King City that ran on KSBW last night. But this is the biggest challenge, I think, of our lifetime is going to be how we address the needs within our community for housing. And I want to acknowledge the people doing it. I see Marina. I acknowledge that they're getting it done. I also want to acknowledge Solidad and Gonzalez. We talk about 20% as the inclusionary percentage for Monterey County. Those cities have found a way to make it 30. And so as those projects get challenged publicly repeatedly, I want to call out, we're not looking at a floor, we're looking, we're not looking at a ceiling, we're seeing it as a floor in South County. We get what we're doing. We're trying to address this challenge that is real for our communities. And there's the economics piece to the question of, right? How we store that generational wealth that has been in homes? That was an American decision. The creation of the 30-year mortgage was an American decision and creation to get more Americans to own, to get them in. And that remains unique really to the US and a few of our partners overseas. No one else does it that way. But historically, it's what's also created that middle class that we talk about and the challenges that we face in a place where permitting costs, you know, the costs of getting connected, the costs of materials, and now with, let's be frank, these tariffs that are pushing where a lot of these materials come from, costs even higher. That is the burden that we carry right now as elected leaders to try to find solutions and create those. It's not a new challenge, but it's an exacerbated one in the world that we're living in today. And I share the concerns, but I also have to say, my largest concern right now with HCD is moving the needle on the projects. I mean, Craig knows, he gets the calls from me where I say, I've got this house, can we move this? I mean, there was one just a few weeks ago, it was like, it just needs to be finalized. It's been done for 45 days and she can't get the final signed off. And it was affecting three people behind her because she was selling her house to someone and that person was renting the house to someone. And to me, that story from Lockwood painted the real story, which is, building a house doesn't just impact one family, it's impacting three or four and everybody in the chain. And that's how folks move into a new home that costs less, but is not a brand new building. So we can continue to complain about that high cost and use that as a reason to not permit more housing. But all that's doing is hurting everyone else in line in that reverberation of housing impact when you build a new unit. And so I want you to focus on that. You know, I'm going to continue to call on, get more of what's in the pipe done, get it through, let's get these things built. I know we all saw Catch Heat, there was recently an article about H2A, and folks were complaining, saying, ah, but these H2A workers, right, they're not from here and they're getting priority housing. I see it as if you didn't have those 1,300 men living in the units in, say, Spreckles, where it's 800 people, they would be out in the community competing for housing. And they would be stacking 15 people, and then there'd be a bunch of cars in the driveway. And our community would be worse off if our industry had not invested in this way. I was sad to not see that byline in there. I'm sure Supervisor Alejo gave them the truth on that, but they chose not to write that in that LA Times story. And that was a disservice to what we've done in this county to help and something that our HCD department should be extremely proud of moving the needle on. So I don't think it's the right time for a registry, right? I know that the cost for multiple units in Salinas, I mean, I know people who paid $400, $500 just to register a unit, and then nothing came of it. It was like, all right, now I'm on a list, what does it actually do? Nothing. And so I agree that, continue to keep our finger on the pulse and the data in watching a lot of these cases moving through. Let's not try to reinvent the wheel. As much as I love Monterey County, I will not say that we are unique in terms of the challenge that we're facing, and several others are facing court battles, are facing challenges to their ordinances and attempts. Number one has to be create units because there is no solution that moves us beyond that piece. But how we generate funding perhaps, long-term with vacant units? I've heard, I've seen some great emails from folks with thoughts. Let's watch what others are doing and bring some of those ideas to the table when the time is right, when you have that capacity within your department. But for now, I'd say stay the course and move as many units as you can through the pipe as quickly as possible. Let's get people housed by building the units that they deserve.
Supervisor Lopez, I just wanted to add that when it comes to the affordable housing, it's not free. There's always a cost to everything. And I think, I don't remember where, I think it was Darby Marshall who gave a presentation, I think in the 4H Committee. When you talk about, oh, 20% is not enough. Well, if you, if you increase it and it doesn't pencil off, then nothing gets built. But I think Darby had said, on average, you know, somebody's paying for that. That means the other units at a market rate, guess how much they're paying on average for the subsidized one? $29,000 more for the other units that are subsidizing the affordable units. That's significant. So if you buy a new house, it's just marked up already in a development to pay for those ones that are lower income. And on the flip side, when we have a completely affordable project like Eden Housing is doing now on our county project, look how long it's taking. It's like been three, four years to come here a few months ago. And then, and I said, what's that plan? Well, now we got to raise the money and they got to get the tax credits and to actually build it. And who knows how long that's going to take? Another three or four years? So that means for one project, 132 units, you're talking about eight years for 100% affordable project. It's very tedious for those that specialize in this area of law. So when people tell me that, I always said, yes, but it comes from somewhere, somebody got to pay. And employers on the, on the farm worker, ag employer sponsored housing, they're paying it for their employees. They're not, they're not in the business of doing housing for everyone in the community. But nonetheless, that's, that's been, I think, a shining example of employers doing something right that is not being done elsewhere in our state and the country.
Supervisor Askew?
Yeah, thank you. And just as we, just for direction moving forward, I think this is, this is really, really valuable information. Like I said, I have so many more questions and would love so much more information. But I think that if we could request that a presentation, that this same presentation be shared with the Housing Advisory Committee, I think that that group would be very interested in receiving this information with the data that you collected and the 4H Committee. I think we're here, sitting here, but maybe just as an attachment, because I know there's a whole group of other folks that follow that, follow that agenda. So if we could just have it attached to a future 4H Committee agenda. And then also, because I know our state and our federal elected delegates are always looking for data points to reference from our community, if we could just put this information into a letter without a particular ask, but just from a point of sharing, you know, the information that we've gathered so that it's easily accessible to them, so that they are able to reference it and point to it easily? If we could put this in a letter to our state and federal representatives, letting them know we've collected this data, we're making it available to you so that it's easily accessible for you to reference if and when needed for housing conversations or discussions or legislative efforts? And to highlight the challenges facing our community in terms of rental costs and increasing rental needs of our rental resident, the needs of our renting constituencies. I think those would be two actions that we can take immediately to highlight and to document and to raise the voices of those who we represent.
I'm good with that direction. I have a nod. I see nods on the dais for a majority, all four. All right. With that, we'll consider that item concluded. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Appreciate the insights. And we'll jump down to the preliminary analysis response to border referral number 25.04, which is Monterey County Regional Fire District Directors Vacancies Ensuring Completion of Board of Supervisors Direction. I have Karina Bokanovic down for this one. Karina, are you with us virtually?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Karina Bokanovic, as you said, with the administrative office. The item before you today is to receive a preliminary analysis report in response to border referral number 2025.04, seeking a follow-up on border referral 2023.19, which is entitled Monterey County Regional Fire District Board of Directors Vacancies, and to ensure completion of Board of Supervisor Direction. As background, border referral number 2023.19 was issued in October 2023 by Supervisor Askew, directing the development of a policy to support the Board of Supervisors in making equitable appointments to the Monterey County Regional Fire District Board of Directors. The referral further requested that the policy include guidance on determining equitable representation from all supervisory districts served, notification to the Board regarding upcoming or pending vacancies, and to ensure that the Board engage in meaningful recruitment of interested eligible persons from throughout the fire district service area. The related process, Board Policy G10, was formally adopted by your Board in February 2024. In March 2025, the Board was asked to consider making an appointment to the Fire District's Board of Directors, which highlighted a failure in the full and consistent implementation of the policy, leading to the issuance of border referral number 2025.04 as a follow-up to ensure compliance with the Board's direction given under referral 2023.19. Referral 2025.04 directs the full and consistent implementation of Board Policy G10, which includes full Board notifications of upcoming or pending vacancies to the Fire District Board, Board engagement in the meaningful recruitment of interested eligible persons from throughout the Fire District Service Area, and review, adoption, and implementation of the overall policy regarding appointments to the of the overall policy regarding appointments to the special districts. Following the issuance of this referral, a meeting consisting of the Administrative Office, Perk of the Board, and Office of the County Council was convened to discuss the implementation of the existing policy. After reviewing the sequence of events, it was determined that notification of the recent vacancy was sent to the Board District Office's general email on February 10, 2025. As an additional notification safeguard, staff is recommending that the policy be modified to include that vacancy notifications be sent to the chiefs of staff for each supervisory district as part of the notification process. Further modifications are also warranted to streamline the review process of applications, nominations to confirm residency and determine the supervisory district in which the nominee resides. Staff is proposing to bring forward a revised policy G20 and a new general appointment policy for special districts for the board's consideration in, in late June 2025. And that completes staff preliminary report. We're available for any questions that you may have.
Supervisor Askew?
Yeah, thank you. And so I appreciate everyone's patience on this particular item. The, the regional fire district appointment, it's a separate, it's a special district that the Board of Supervisors appoints the representatives of. Going back in time, historically, there were only people who lived in two of the districts. So by default, there was never a need for anyone from District Four to be appointed to the district. And so by practice, appointees to the district took claim to be appointed from certain districts that became noticed on the website. And as new appointees became appointed, it was then done through those supervisory offices. So there was a need to create a process and to create some opportunities for residents from East Garrison to have the opportunity to know when vacancies became open so that they had the opportunity to apply for the vacancy. They couldn't do that if they didn't know that there was a vacancy that be, became, became vacant. So we spent two years asking for vacancies to be notify, to be notified of vacancies and then finally asked to have the policy created so that we could have notification occur when vacancies happened. So this was the first sort of chance to utilize the policy. And under Procedure Three, or 4.3, which I think was the intent of having a broader notification process occur, we, I think, gave the benefit of the doubt, assuming that broad notification would be happening. So thank you for, but, but in fact, it, it, it sort of slipped through the cracks yet again. So I'm bringing the referral back to say, hey, rather than assuming that we'll have broad notification, let's go ahead and amend the policy once again to call out specifically, step by step by step, what our expectations are in terms of notification, to ensure, in fact, that residents of all districts that qualify to participate in the Board of Directors of the fire district have the opportunity to be notified when vacancies are announced. So for that purposes, I think we would, rather than adding just the chief of staff, I would like to request that we add the BOSS All email so that the notification is sent to the, the full, there's a, there's a, a group, I don't, I think it's called BOSS All. So if we could call that out specifically, it does state having the notification posted in the newspaper as well as on the county website. I think our intent was that the website would include social media, but we would like to have that called out specifically, that the vacancy be listed or posted on county social media so that it's clear and available for members of the public. So county and fire district, social media and websites would be the second piece. And again, the desire, and I'll just be on record with this, I don't know if there's anywhere else to change it in the policy, but that supervisors for districts two, three, four, and five all have representation on the fire district board as, and recognizing that that's going to require a change. And at some point, one of the representatives who currently serves on the fire district board who represents District Three and Five will at some point have to give up a District Three or Five seat to allow for someone from District Two or Four to then join the board because those seats have been historically representing two districts. So just wanting to make that clear that there is a desire, East Garrison residents have continued to express a desire to apply for and have opportunity to serve on the board. So those would be my two requests for additional changes to the policy.
We have one member that was appointed to this board, to the Board of Directors that actually came from District Four, but recently relocated to District Five, I believe. And I think when that appointment was made, that was one of the things that was called out. I think originally that individual made the application from their workplace, but that actually resides in District Five. So Karina, is, do you recall that?
Yeah, that, I remember that was, used to work for Monty, she worked for CSOMB, and it was said, I think from the dice that she could represent District Four. And so we made that, I mean, those were the words used from, right, to make that appointment was that they would represent it well. And then the next time it came back, there was, right, the comment that, well, nobody represents District Four, but it was said that, well, this person does.
I didn't say that. I wasn't, it didn't come to me. Someone may have stated that. It wasn't stated, it wasn't.
I could look at my notes.
Go ahead, Kate.
I'm in refrain, that's good.
Yeah, so I don't know that I can support the, you know, let's decide office, which district right now, just given the history. Sure, okay. Okay, so what were the two recommendations? It was the
To be clear that
BOSS Everyone email and
And county social media and fire district social media be specifically listed so that, at least so that people have the opportunity to know there's a vacancy that they should apply.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
Well, one, I don't think it just, just for the sake of rotating makes sense. I think when applications come, all five supervisors should consider them and pick the best person, not based, oh, you gotta give up your seat now so I could, my district could decide. No. When applications open, base it on, on the, choosing the best person with the best experience that could serve that district. But everybody obviously gets a fair chance to apply. On notifications, I, I, I don't mind the BO, the Board of Supervisors email, but then, then who, who's, who's gonna put it on the website? That's where the supervisors should put it on the website. The supervisors could remind Nick, can you post this on there versus giving the order to some, there's so many things that come up. It's gonna be hard for the communication team to, to be able to do it, be able to keep track of every vacancy that, that we, we're now gonna say, somebody has to post it up. I would say put it on the supervisor's office, post it on your social media, and then you can make the request to Nick Paschulich to then post it. That makes it easy for the four supervisory districts. I, I just don't want to keep putting more and more on staff. And then when, if something were to fall through the cracks, then when the meeting comes up, we're blaming staff for not posting the, the social media. And I've seen that before. And I just want to keep it as simple as possible, put the burden on the supervisor's office to then remind staff if they, and ask if they can post those vacancy announcements.
Anybody else on this one? Okay. Okay. All right, then, you know, on the social media thing, my only concern is we don't control fire district social media. I don't even know that I follow your social media. I don't know if you have an active page. I don't mind giving direction that our staff does personally, that they post it, you know, and I think that is on us to remind them. I wouldn't, I think that's good general direction. It's not like if it doesn't happen, we're gonna come back and say, go again. I just think that, that's on all of us to do. But creating that as an expectation, I'm fine with for our own. I can't make that team expectation on the fire district, they're gonna do what they think is right. And again, what they have bandwidth to do, given the challenges on that front. So I'm, I'm fine with those pieces. All right, then I, okay, so I'm seeing general direction has been given on that. We'll open up for public comment, and I do see Chief Sergeant Tis, we'll give him the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and fellow supervisors. I'd just like to kind of start with some acknowledgement of your staff. They did a tremendous job under the leadership of CIO de la Rosa on keeping us informed as to what their needs were. And, you know, I think it's important to recognize that this is a rather unique situation in the county, particularly with our fire district and the appointment of our Board of, Board of Directors. One thing I do want to mention as well, as we're looking at changes, as we've run through this now twice, is a bit of the change on bullet number six, where I think initially when this was contemplated, that committee was going to do some assessments of those folks. And really, that's been taken out of the, the hand of that committee. So I would recommend that we scale that committee down to maybe just Karina or her representative and myself. We can quickly go through each of them and determine what district they live in. There's really no other thing headed your way as you guys contemplate the applications in front of you as they come forward. So I think that would reduce the burden on our neighboring departments, our Board of Directors, as well as county staff. So thank you.
Anyone else via Zoom? Okay, seeing other hands up, we'll bring it back. And I heard that Supervisor Askew's okay with that request from the fire district to streamline. I'm hearing, I'm seeing a nod. I've got, I'm in on that, that's three. All right, everyone else, four? All right, then with that, I think we'll consider direction given and conclude the item. Thank you, Chief. With that, we've concluded business besides CIO's comments and board comments. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn to our CIO.
Very briefly today, I just want to thank all the members of the Public Works Facilities and Parks that showed up this morning. I think it's extraordinary and also a sign of our great leadership in the Public Works Department and our various offices throughout the county. Love it when folks are able to take the time to come down and, and see us, but also to know that we're very well represented in the community. In addition to that, I do want to recognize the work of the Ag Commissioner's Office. They are the ones that we are acknowledging for today in terms of their accomplishments in the last 12 months. The Commissioner's Office provides environmental and consumer protection through local enforcement of state laws and regulations that protect our local agriculture, agricultural workers and communities and from invasive pests, ensure the safe and, the safe and healthy food supply and equity in the marketplace. They have participated in numerous community outreach events, including the 27th Annual Dia del Trabajo Agrícola, Community Resource Fair in King City, and the Farmworker Resource Center's Community Resource Fair in San Ardo, specifically aimed at engaging with our communities in South County about services and the, the services the office provides. They have assisted in educating our county's youth about agriculture through different events, including promoting the Monterey County Agricultural Education Program and volunteering numerous staff during all three farm days taking place in King City, Monterey, and Salinas. In addition, there is an increased effort to provide winter prefereness, erosion and flu, and flood resource information to the growers by communicating through written correspondence, calling, email, and social media. These efforts are in collaboration with other county agencies and partners and have increased grower awareness to the need to address erosion issues in farms. And lastly, they have protected agriculture, our communities, and the landscapes from invasive pests by deploying 3,671 insect traps and spent 300, I'm sorry, 13,744 hours servicing and monitoring them for unwanted invasive pests. So that is our agricultural commissioner.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go, board comments, eye contact, we're gonna ask you.
All right, I'm ready to start us off. I wanted to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day. I would just had a fantastic opportunity to go backpacking and hike 12 miles in Yosemite around the Hatchachi with some moms. I was one of the youngest of the crowd and was able to keep up, so really proud of myself, but definitely feeling it. Thank you, Dawn and Patty and Elizabeth and everyone. My staff had the opportunity to attend the Salinas Hometown Heroes Banner Program, Salinas Remembers Company C event, which paid tribute to the 105 men from Salinas who were part of Company C, the 194th Tank Battalion who left Salinas in 1941. Unfortunately, many never returned to Salinas. So thank you again to the folks who are honoring and keeping their memory alive through the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. This coming week, there's a couple of events I wanted to share. On Wednesday, May 21st, at 3:00 p.m. on Zoom or in person, our budget committee, county budget committee will be meeting at 3:00 p.m. to receive the first presentation, public presentation of our 25, 26, CIO's draft budget. This will be a chance to hear what the draft overall budget looks like. And so come listen, hear, see what that, that might look like. And then the following day, on Thursday, May 22nd, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. in person at my office in Marina, Assistant CIO Debbie Pellet Nelly will be joining me. We're having an open office hours to talk about the budget and to sit with the budget book and go into detail into the different departments. So that will be in person, we'll just be available. So come stop by the office and have just an informal conversation about the budget. Bring your questions, concerns, thoughts. And so we'll be available. Also, on Thursday evening at 5:00 p.m., the Seaside City Council will be receiving, or shortly thereafter, the Seaside City Council will be seeing a presentation on a proposal for a Home Key Plus project to convert a hotel, a hotel in Seaside into, I believe it was 42 or 43 studio apartments. Our 4H Committee had an opportunity to hear about this project briefly and gave indication of initial support. It would require a financial commitment from the county for some of the wraparound behavioral health supports for those residents. It would be permanent supportive housing. And the new 4H, or sorry, the new Home Key programming requires county commitment. So we gave the indication that that is something that we would be very interested in supporting. So the city of Seaside now has to decide if this is a project that they want to support. So we are encouraging folks who want to see a Home Key project in Seaside on the peninsula to be the first Home Key project on the peninsula. And there is a developer who's interested in working on it. So if you're interested in supporting that or learning more about it, please do go attend the Seaside City Council meeting to, to, to learn more. Those are my announcements. Happy Mother's Day, everyone.
All right, Supervisor Alejo.
Great. I just wanted to say, I think we need the Home Key project on peninsula. So I'm glad that, hopefully, I wanted to support that process. I know the decisions has to be made, but, but great. But you've seen the ones that are being done in Salinas, the one in King City, and, and to see one on the peninsula, well, I think, the need is certainly there. I just want to say that our Latino Caucus of Counties has a retreat in SLO at this, at the end of this week, where I'll be at. Number two, just Supervisor Lopez and I are working on a special commemoration about a landmark legal case that came out of Monterey County to end the use of the short-handled hole, or cortito, that used to damage the backs of countless numbers of farmworkers for decades, up until California Rural Legal Assistance and lead plaintiff Sebastian Carmona out of Solidad took the case on. It took several years, but on April 17, 1975, under a special writ to the California Supreme Court, its use was put to an end once and for all, really taking, taking care of the health and well-being of so many farmworkers and their families after the fact. So we want to do a special commemoration on June 10th in these chambers to honor the two lead attorneys, Mo Jordan and Marty Glick, and the plaintiff's family, as he has passed away, of Sebastian Carmona, and then one of the late CRLA community workers, Hector de la Rosa of Solidad too, right, Chris?
Right.
Yes. So we'll have them here to do that special ceremony then. And then in the afternoon, from 4:30 to 6:30 that day, CRLA is hosting a bigger community event at the Salinas Elks Lodge. And so everybody's invited to that, and we'll make sure all the supervisors have the information for that event. So for me, it's not just about the case. For me, it's, it's examples where courageous local residents from our county stood up to address injustices that really harmed the, the lives of so many previous workers. And because of that courage, the lives of so many in California were made better. And that is worthy of praise, but it's also important to inspire the next generation that it took some courage of local people to do, make a change throughout California and locally. And we want to hopefully inspire the next generation to learn from these shining examples that came out of our county. Last but not least, I know he's not, he's not, because he had to take his son to a medical appointment, but I want to just say happy birthday to my staff, Javier Gomez, whose, his birthday is tomorrow, no, Thursday. And Javier, for those that, most people know him, but he's worked for me already for 16 out of my but he's worked for me already for 16 out of my 17 years in political office. So I want to say thank you to Javier. He's one of my most dedicated people I've ever met in my career, my professional career. So I just want to say hats off to him, and I thank him for all his hard work for the people of Salinas and Monterey County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There we go. Went to, on Friday, to the Springfield Consolidated Water Project Groundbreaking, which is the one that had the $15 from the, $15, yeah, sure, $15 for a water project. Let's have some more of those. $15 million from the state. And this for folks that have gone many, many years without drinking water, not so different from San Lucas, which we're hoping we're gonna resolve here. And unfortunately, while that was a great turnout, and we heard from some people who are now gonna have water they can, they can actually have their children drink from instead of bottled water. Unfortunately, we also had, that was the southern part of the project. The northern part of the project, which goes up to, closer to Paharo and also along Highway 1, the Bluff Jensen Roads area. Unfortunately, that $20 million from the federal government will not be coming. So that project is It was clawed back, and it's not gonna happen. And appreciate Supervisor Askew for having, hearing about that and got, given us attention onto that. But it was one of those that somehow was a target, and it would help a great deal of people who also have very poor water situations. And it'll have to wait a few more years, unfortunately. On a little more positive note, and the only other thing I really have is the Roma's Community Park is having its annual Roma's Wine Walk with, featuring wines from local wineries, food pairing and craft from 11 to 3 on Sunday. I think that's about it for me.
Thank you. I will start by saying that on Saturday night, I got to go to a reggae concert, which was super fun and was a really important fundraiser for the Village Project. The Emennata Warriors, who came here on our swearing-in day, are headed to Ghana. And so it's a really exciting opportunity for this, these youth. And so I know that they didn't raise all the money they need to raise at this incredible concert. So if you're interested in supporting, definitely visit the Village Project's website. Look up this incredible opportunity for these amazing children. I think it was the last time I cried at the Board of Supervisors meeting, was when they were here. I also had an opportunity last week to attend a meeting that Assembly Member Askew put together. And it was really neat that it was here on the Central Coast. It was here in Carmel Valley, and it was the Central Coast Caucus. And so we had everyone from as far south as Assembly Member Hart and Senator Limon, as well as our local representatives here, Senator Laird, Assembly Member Addis, Assembly Member Rivas, Speaker Rivas, and am I forgetting someone? I think that's it. But it was a really, it was a really wonderful conversation to be part of, and it was exciting, that was right in District 5. I had the opportunity last week as well to visit Carmel High School and speak to the student senate. And both Kimbley and I attended that, and it was a walk down memory lane. Several meetings last week about housing and renter issues, in particular with senior citizens in our community. And so we are hopefully moving forward with the right types of partners to actually move the needle on the issues that I ran on. So I'm happy to report that. There is an upcoming community meeting in District 5. It is the San Benansio Corral de Tira area, and it's this Sunday, from May 18th, from this Sunday, May 18th, 9:30 to 11:00 AM. And it's gonna be right at Corral de Tira, at the country club, and everyone is welcome. So if you live in, along Highway 68, along the corridor, and you have the opportunity to join us this Sunday at 9:30 AM, bring your issues, bring the challenges that you're facing in your part of the district, and I'm looking forward to having that conversation with you. And that's all I've got to report today, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. I'll share that this weekend I had the opportunity to go to a duck race. Not just any duck race, it was the Oroseco Citizens Association Duck Race, and it was their 7th annual. A great event where they actually raised money for the local fire station. And the incredible piece is that they reach out to all the local colleges, and they challenge their engineering teams. They come on site, they build robotic ducks, and they race them down the river. There's multiple heats. But then the fundraising component is you can buy a duck for $5, and they're numbered, and then they get released downriver, they catch and account for every single one of them. None get left behind. And there's prize money. So it's very competitive, as people try to track whether it was their duck or not to cross the finish line first. So I want to thank everybody who made that incredible event possible. It was on Mexican Mother's Day, which was Saturday. And so I just want to thank that group who just goes above and beyond in creating opportunity
Where did your duck place?
My dead last, no. Just about, it wasn't even in the top 20. I have one in the past, but I donated the money back. But unfortunately, this was not my year. My duck was slow. And so I also want to share that I did that right after landing from DC. I had an opportunity to meet with a lot of agencies, including BLM, Department of Interior, the White House Domestic Policy Council, several members of Congress. It was a whirlwind, 48 hours on the ground. There were highlights, such as NTIA saying that they were not changing their Fiber First format in terms of implementing broadband in our rural communities, that they still were focused on that, regardless of what we were reading in headlines. And also dark moments, reality checks from Forest Service leadership in our meetings with them about what their unfortunate situation is gonna be given, some of the budget proposals moving forward, and their ability to respond to the needs of our community. They're requesting additional partnership as we move forward. So we're looking for things like the expansion of Good Neighbor Authority, which would give us and our local services the ability to do mitigation work in their lands when necessary along the fringe in the Wui. So an extremely quick 48 hours, but very productive. I do also want to share that this Friday will be that ribbon cutting for the new stadium in Gonzalez, which is Dick Forest Stadium, which has been around for a really long time. And so just want to congratulate them. Thursday, we'll be cutting the ribbon on the Nasi Lodges in the morning. So if you're around, come out and join us for that. I'll be joining, that is gonna be Thursday at 10:00 AM at Lake Nasi Meadow Resort. We'll be cutting the ribbon on those. So looking forward to doing that with Brian and Nick and team down there. And then I'll be at the retreat with Supervisor Lejo, as mentioned, but I will be coming back first thing Saturday morning because the highlight of my year is the fair in King City and that auction where we raise well over a million dollars every year that goes back to the youth and the other 4-H, not the committee, but the organization, and FFA, where the kids raise animals to learn about animal husbandry, the process of raising an animal and then sending it to market, and knowing that their work paid off. And so I'm gonna be helping in the ring with Congressman Panetta on Saturday morning. So look forward to welcoming anybody down to the Salinas Valley Fair this year. It will be a good time, as always promised. The weather's looking just fine for this weekend. And lastly, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, including my wife. We had a very fun day with the kids. We were trailer rides, we went down to the river and swam for a while, came back home, and she got her time to work with her bees and just spend time in the garden planting plants. And it's nice and quiet to be home after a week away, so. With that, I'm gonna turn to council to see if there's anything to report out of closed session.
No reportable action.
All right, with that, we've concluded the day's business.